Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lewiston Planning Board for November 18th to order. My name is Lucy Bisson. I'm the chair, and I would ask Amy Smith, Secretary, for the roll call, please.
Thank you. Roger Dupree?
Here.
Mark Roy?
Here.
Mike Marcot?
Present.
Shannon Cox?
Here.
Lucy Bisson?
Here.
Alex Fine?
Here.
And Amy Smith, here.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
And there is some correspondence that was on our desks as we sat down.
Yes, so there are four items. There's an updated membership list for the board. Associate member Jama Mohammed moved, so he's no longer eligible to be on the board due to which ward he's in and the number of people on the board. There is a piece of correspondence from Counselor Chittam related to your discussion of shelters. And then there's two items from the ordinance that staff printed. One of them is a description of each of the zoning districts from Article 11, which may be of benefit when you discuss districts in the map. And then the other is updates to the business licensing, Chapter 22, which is going for final passage tomorrow evening to the council. I've highlighted on page eight the requirement that homeless shelters that don't serve families and children be located at least 250 feet away from a school or daycare. So there was discussion last time about whether that was being stricted or not and what the dimension was.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so we're going to go move on to other business. This is a workshop. Normally, we do not entertain comments from the audience. Tonight, we will be, so we will have a discussion, and then I will bring it up, discussion, so that if anyone from the audience wishes to make any comments, they will be able to. Okay? Thank you. All right, so the planning board is holding a workshop to discuss changes to the zoning and land use code to update the homeless shelter overlay and locations where shelters are allowed, and to consider changes to definitions and conditional use permit requirements for homeless shelter. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning and Code Enforcement Department on or before the meeting, and comments will be accepted at the workshop. So Craig, would you like to discuss your comments and?
Yes.
Bring us up to speed, or whoever wishes to do it.
Absolutely. So, following up on the last two workshops that you've had this night, this evening, staff was looking for continued discussion with the following hopeful takeaways. The first would be a clear area where you want to allow shelters. So we do have a map for marking up, and there was a map in your packet that shows existing zoning districts, and also shows where the existing shelter overlay is located. Related to that, any requirements for splitting out shelters into different types, be they size-based, the population they serve, whether they are open 24 hours or have 24-hour services and programming or not, as related to where you want to allow them. The third is determining when buffers would apply and what those uses are that buffers would be from. There was good discussion about that last time. And then finally, to get a clear list of what conditional use permit requirements specific to shelters you would want to see drafted up by staff. We have some bare bones there based on the discussion we had on October 21st, so, in your packet. So those were the items that we were hoping to have further clarification this evening. Obviously, if we need to have another workshop, we can, but that's what we're hoping to have accomplished this evening, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Cox?
Just a process point. I wrote down your four desired outcomes. If we tackle the conversations in the chronological order of one through seven on the memo, will we have achieved those desired outcomes naturally, or at least given ourselves the chance to achieve them?
Um, I apologize, because I left my packet upstairs, so I'm going to have to run and get that.
Want me to tell you what one through seven looks like?
That'd be great.
So one is excerpt from Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code. Two is Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 10. The first one was Article 2. Then we move to Article 11. Then we look at a color copy of the current zoning map with the existing shelter overlay, then a color copy of the current zoning map that's zoomed into the downtown area, then a matrix, and then a map of the existing shelter overlay with additional areas for consideration. Those are the one through seven that you gave us.
Yeah, so those would all be valuable in this conversation. The order that those are in might not be the order you want to tackle them. So definitions, for example, might not be the first thing you tackle, but certainly looking at that, the matrix that we had put together, where last time the board spent quite some time talking about how you might treat a 24-hour shelter differently than a, you know, non-24, or a small, medium, or large size, yes, differently.
Matrix.
So I think that that discussion needs to happen before we tease out kind of how the definitions will go.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Would you like to lead the discussion, Ms. Cox?
I'm happy to dive in. It feels like the matrix in combination with the definitions, because column one is definitions, and I am grateful that we have clear definitions and concrete language to start from. So I hear you saying it might not be the helpful starting point, but I feel like it's a pretty good one.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think that this might be a bit iterative this evening.
Okay.
Because when-
We ask for everyone's patience with that.
Yeah, yeah. When you talk about the map, you know, there may be different categories that you're going to treat the same as to where they're located, or you may decide to treat them differently, in which case we need to define them, so.
Well, then, if it pleases my peers, may we start with both what should have been the top document, the index and definitions, not the new one that was handed out when we arrived, but the one in our packet, and the matrix?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I know I missed our last workshop, so I, you can tell me to step back-
No, no.
-and I'm happy to do that. But I know that in terms of the conversation we both heard from the public and that had at the last meeting I did attend, really did say it would make sense for a family-serving shelter that's only two families in it to be located in a school neighborhood, and maybe that's the only time that that would make sense. So it feels like before we can get to maps, buffers, conditional uses, some of this language really is important. Are you all okay with starting there?
Yeah, sounds like a plan.
That's what we did last time, so-
Yeah.
It'd be good to sort of, I think, go through the same process.
Sure.
You know, now that we've refined it, we've gotten up to a higher sort of level of material to work through.
Can I ask staff a leading question that's in both of these documents? Previously, in conversations we've had, we've talked about beds, and all of this language is around occupants. Just does that pull from licensing language or somewhere else, and we're just consistent? That's great.
It mainly pulls from building codes, right? Everybody's going to need to get a permit for their occupancy, and the language in the building codes references occupants. And so we went with occupancy.
Love consistency.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're trying-
That's great.
We're trying to be as consistent as possible. Mike, and then Alex.
Okay. Hard to know where to start, actually.
Yeah.
The last meeting, when I went home and assessed it, seemed to get away from us. Because first meeting and into the second meeting, we were discussing not having shelters of any sort in NCA and commercial corridors. By the end of the meeting, that was open, wide open. I've made some notes, not sure how, not to insert them here with the format that I still don't quite understand, but maybe as we trudge through it. And at one point at the last meeting, for those who weren't here, when we discussed number of occupants, there was a five to two vote to expand that from one to 10 to one to 16. Or as it's laid out here, opening it up to the 11 to 16. I know it's two different pieces of the matrix, but it's allowing up to 16 in a NCA. And I have a series of notes here, which probably kind of pop in and out of different aspects. Hopefully, my number two and five items below it sort of address that concern. It's basically a bunch of questions. I don't expect answers immediately. They'll probably never get answered, but they are concerns of mine. So if implemented, what is the financial impact in neighborhoods and businesses regarding public perception of these areas? Two, decrease in property values, question mark. C, how does this impact property values under current ongoing city property evaluation or valuation? A question yet asked or answered? Will companies or individuals choose Lewiston to live? When and how does the problem get solved, homelessness? Is this a perpetual implementation that cannot ever be corrected or reversed? What organization will be in charge of returning these people back into a productive contributing part of the Lewiston community? Review process, timeframe, safety concerns, added police presence, and costs? And E, what additional city funding will be needed to operate these facilities? Where will money come from? CDBG funds, which are not applicable to all districts, and it's by census tract. My concern, I didn't ask the question at previous meetings, although it crossed my mind. I understand that these properties, if they were to locate in an NCA district, let's say along Ashmont Street, to use an example, a home becomes available for the right price, put in a shelter, and is it nonprofit? Lewiston has a huge load of nonprofit. Can we afford any more? Like this says, remember Detroit. If it's for profit, the owner basically leases to the agency that serves the need, then that issue alleviates a little bit, but there's no guarantee that it won't come off the tax rolls. Secondly, we're going through the revaluation right now. Homes are likely to double in valuation. People are going to get sticker shock next year when it's implemented. That valuation came in before any of these changes. These changes go into effect, does that depreciate values in those NCA neighborhoods? A bulk of our tax revenue comes from NCA and other residential zones. Some of us didn't want NCA in the beginning, and it seemed to get away from us in the last meeting. Even the council discussed staying away from commercial zones. That seemed to get away from us as well. Where are we going to get the businesses to come into Lewiston and provide the tax base, provide the job opportunities for people to improve their economic status? These are questions that haven't really been answered. Maybe my first section here, which is somewhat of a foundation to the economic issues, what factual information is driving the need for the homeless shelter addition into multiple zones? Where is the factual information located that staff is responding to? Define the problem. Who is providing this information, and do they have a personal financial stake in this implementation? Is the need current, or are we absorbing incoming transients and placing the burden on Lewiston taxpayers to absorb? As we've seen busloads dropped off right here in front of City Hall on a couple of occasions recently. Does this turn more taxpaying properties into nonprofit status, which I previously mentioned? How much can Lewiston absorb? We're at a breaking point. So, I know that two meetings ago, when it appeared that maybe two of us or more were not happier with what we thought was going to be the motion on the floor, and then there was an opportunity to have the initiation from this board so that we could drive the discussion instead of just passing it back to the council to throw us a document that says yes or no. But opening it up to discussion seems to have been a slippery slope. I mean, the entire city, every zone, really. There are residents out there, the silent majority, unfortunately, they don't show up en masse, but they're not going to be happy when and if something pops up right next door to them. Their property values are going to suffer after they just got raised through evaluation. We don't need to repeat the mistakes of Detroit.
Okay, thank you. Alex?
Yeah. When I was thinking about occupants, I was wondering, you know, all these facilities are going to be staffed, and if they're overnight, you know, someone who's going to be there as a staff member, I would assume that we're counting that in under occupants, so, you know.
No.
The building code doesn't specify. Occupants are the beds for individuals.
The beds, okay. So like even if there's like a staff person who's going to be sleeping there, it wouldn't count towards that?
It doesn't specify, right.
Or maybe it would, like, this is something we will have to figure out in the code process. And then, sort of in response to Michael's concerns about where this is heading, I think the idea was that we were trying to sort of develop something to make a choice between options. And I hear the frustration around having this open up to some of the zoning districts that you felt were, you know, just not a good fit. I think when we were, from what I remember when we were discussing this, we were talking about that, and specifically in relation to family and child shelters. But I think, you know, to what Shannon was just mentioning earlier, where we're going to be talking definitions, we're going to be talking about this matrix, I think that's the time to talk about those concerns. And if we want to adjust what we talked about from the last meeting, that's why we're doing workshops, and that's why we're being iterative. I don't think this is a done deal at this point, and certainly, there's a lot of debate that can still happen.
Anyone else have any comments at this point? So-
So I'm just going to gut check something really quick because of the response to Alex's question just a moment ago, Mr. Connor, but occupants and beds, I think about a family shelter where two parents are sharing a bed, that that counts as one or two people, occupants?
Two. So the occupant, in answer to Alex's question-
But the staff who is not being serviced or is a guest in the shelter would not count.
Correct.
And we're assuming that we didn't get a one to 10 family 24-hour shelter, and then we put 10 humans in there, and then added the staff person, and somehow city code said we can only put 10 people in this building safely.
Right, so the building code discusses occupants, especially when you talk about transient versus non-transient. And they look at it from the standpoint of these people are not here all of the time, they're not familiar with the surroundings, with the building, so you have more strict building codes for exits and signage and things of that nature because they're not there all the time, whereas the person working there, that they're there all the time. So it speaks specifically to the occupants being the boarding house members, if you will.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure we're all using the same language, and I will endeavor to use it consistently as well. So we have agreed that we're going to talk about definitions and use them as we think through this matrix, and then we would talk about mapping, which leads me to believe two things. One, we didn't actually make any decisions at our last session, and today's, one of your four desired outcomes, is to make some decisions so you can propose them. Great. And the second is, you talked about conditional use permits, and I would be curious if you could describe for me or all of us how conditional use permits would relate to the overlay district. So like a conditional use permit would be required anywhere in the overlay district, and we are not trying to avoid an overlay district using conditional use permits in the not-matrix, space and bulk chart.
Yeah, so the conditional use permit, so I think it was two meetings ago, I think the board was pretty unanimous that you wanted to keep it the way it is today, which is any district in which a shelter is allowed on the, you know, use chart. It's only allowed with a conditional use permit, not by right. Today, there are no shelter-specific conditional use permit criteria by which you would review that conditional use request. So staff has suggested, and we had some discussion a few meetings ago, about what types of issues might arise kind of specific to a shelter that would lend themselves to additional criteria that the board might want to have at the time when you're determining that conditional use permit.
So then, I would propose that we tackle conditional uses last and in relationship to maps, because the definitions will help us determine the uses by which we're talking about conditional use permits and how that applies to the geography of our community.
Yeah, and you could certainly make a decision that some of the conditional use permit criteria only apply, let's say, to a large shelter, but not to a small shelter, for example. Yep.
Okay. Those are our tools that we're working with, right?
Right.
Okay. So if we could start with the matrix, because I think that this is, I think this is where the rubber hits the road on where there is conflict and disagreement in our broader community that we're tasked with representing, but also in prior discussions here. And so fundamentally, we're talking about three categories based on size. Those sizes are related to occupants of people who are staying in the shelter, not staff.
Correct.
One to 10, 11 to 16, and 16 or more. And that all of the large ones require multifamily screening. So our general process for lots of people staying in one building, going to get applied across the board. In our columns at the top, we've got Family and Youth, which is a 24-hour program, and then we're recognizing the way in which people having to leave for a portion of the day, every day, impacts the community frankly negatively, right? So we've parsed the Family and Youth into also a non-24-hour program. Likewise, we have adult in a 24-hour program, and then in a non-24-hour program. You all want to talk about size first, or duration?
I mean, I think, at least from what I heard Michael saying, it sounds like we need to talk about the intersection of small and medium and the Family and Youth program, 24-hour program, because that's what's pushing things into NCA and other residential districts, and there's concern around that. So I think talking about that, to me, makes sense. You know, even though we did discuss it quite a bit, I think in our last meeting, it sounds like maybe there's some-
So to discuss that intersection, I guess what I'm driving at is, can we agree that the differentiation of 24-hour versus non-24-hour is important, and that we might consider uses differently based on it being 24-hour and non-24-hour?
Yes.
Yes.
So like, those are the right kind of ways to think about it. Same with small, medium, and large. And it does appear that, did we get to some consensus around saying, yes, small, medium, and large, and these numbers feel right? Or is there some difference around-
Yeah, we had agreed, we agreed on that last time.
Quick show of hands, just because I-
No, it's a straw poll. In part, because I wasn't sure if your concern was around the addition of a medium category or just the impact-
No, no, we had discussed-
The impacts in certain zones.
Right, because we discussed the small, medium, and large, and had come up with those numbers-
So we've got agreement on all that.
Because they relate to-
To the codes.
They relate back to the codes and stuff like that, so that's where we came-
So I'm here in full support.
Absolutely.
That's great.
That's-
So then we'll-
One check mark.
Yeah, well, there's two there, because we've got building blocks on length of use as well as the size, and I think that's-
Right.
Really great to celebrate some alignment. So let's talk about the intersection of a 24-hour Family and Youth-serving shelter that is 10 people or less.
Mm-hmm.
So in here, it looks like conversation from last time indicated there was some interest in allowing that use everywhere but industrial, and that we wouldn't need buffers.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Having read quickly Mr. Chittam's memo-
Yeah, he mentions not having it in the riverfront as well.
And-
And I kind of agree there as well.
I don't think, because that was the discussion at council that dates back a bit, and it was always industrial and riverfront that was being mentioned as hands-off, as well as commercial. But beyond that, it seemed wide open, and I had concerns about wide open, but I would agree on adding riverfront to that matrix.
Is there anyone who wants to make the case for why riverfront should remain included, and that the exemption would only be for industrial?
I think, from my recollection, and Mark, I don't mean to put words into your mouth, but I think you and I had like the most spirited discussion about this. We were talking about, you know, we were seeing, or at least I was seeing, sort of the small and medium Family and Youth shelters as being like, these are things that can integrate into pretty much any community. And I think, from my recollection, again, I might be misremembering, I was pushing for no industrial, just because I felt like it's a bad place to have kids and family.
Whoa, yeah.
You know, even though, even if the building was cheap, we shouldn't allow for it there. I think, did Counselor Chittam specifically spell out why he had concerns around riverfront? Because I guess the way I see it, you know, I'm not like, you know, so opposed that I want to die on this hill of, we absolutely have to allow it in riverfront, but at the same time, it's sort of like, we're allowing these in places where there are families because we, or at least from my perspective, sort of believe that fundamentally, you know, these could fit into those areas, so why should riverfront be any different? I could see there maybe being concerns around like, a lot of that development is brownfield, right? Like, there isn't an existing building, there isn't an existing neighborhood that it's fitting into as much in some of that zone, right?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, I can see not putting in the riverfront for medium and large, but the small family, I, you know, it's going to be in an apartment-
Yep.
-somewhere, and they're going to be building apartments hopefully someday in that area, and why not? I mean, it's just a family.
We've actually approved recently a whole bunch of two-bedroom apartments directly in the Riverfront Island master plan-
Right.
At the Continental. I'm just not reading Chittam's.
Mark?
Me personally, I am not opposed to having it in the riverfront.
And you're not.
But if it's a concession that will make more people happy, I'm perfectly fine with excluding it-
Right.
...from industrial and riverfront. That, you know, that concession goes away, you know, that ability to make concessions goes away when we start to expand it further. Meaning, in my view, when it comes to small Family and Youth 24-hour programs, frankly, they can be placed anywhere as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
But, you know, if it's, well, except for industrial and riverfront, okay, that's fine. No problem with that.
All right. Shannon?
I just don't read Counselor Chittam's email that way. I wish he was here for us to ask, but I actually, and if we were to call it the second paragraph, maybe, I think he's exempting Family and Youth 24-hour shelters, much the way you just did, Mark, which is-
Bless you.
They could be anywhere if they're small, 24-hour Family and Youth-serving shelters. And new paragraph, let's talk about riverfront being exempted when we get to mapping for all shelters. And I don't know if that's what he intended or not, but I kind of hear this carve out around 24-hour youth and family in his remarks.
If we may, he may end up showing up tonight. He did let us know he's at the Finance Committee meeting, and he may be here, so if you want to put a pin in that, and then when he is here, we could ask him directly what his thought process was on that.
So I would just finish by saying, I'm with Mark. I think riverfront could be exempted from what is gray across the board here, and that it could remain in the two white blocks around 24-hour serving youth, family, small and medium. And that I'm with you on exempting it along with industrial as we get to what the overlay district is. Michael?
Seeing as how it's not mentioned in any of the gray areas, it's an overlay district to be determined, and the way that I've understood council in the past, when they were carving out industrial, riverfront, and commercial zones or corridors, the thought process behind it, and if Mr. Chittam shows up, he can talk to the point more clearly, but my understanding was they wanted to avoid those zones that would provide for the greatest investment, opportunity to grow our tax base, to provide for recreation. I understand that the Continental Mill is in the riverfront, but that building was there. What are you going to do with it? It's what got approved here recently, was probably the best use for it, best use for providing, hopefully, some point after the TIF expires, revenue, net revenue, net bottom line to the revenue, as opposed to a net negative, that so many other housing projects in Lewiston have- other housing projects in Lewiston have, uh, has laid on the rest of the taxpayers. Uh, but, uh, I, I would prefer to see, uh, riverfront in that area. I'd prefer to see, uh, some other items also excluded, as we had discussed in the past, uh, commercial and NCA.
Well, I, I can agree with Michael on commercial and NCA for the large, medium or large, uh, for non-24 hours and especially for the large. I wouldn't want to see them on the corridors and in the riverfront. But I, I don't see why we wouldn't have the small, medium, 24 hours.
But my, uh, concern is not just about behaviors that would be much more ameliable in the 24-hour programs of small and medium.
Okay, well...
At the last meeting, I did not agree with medium, uh, being included in the NCA. And, uh, the, at some point, there's an impact on those people. Now, you have a depressed property somewhere on, on an NCA street, it becomes an opportunity. And locating there, now even if the residents behave and, uh, don't make a huge impact on the neighborhood, now obviously it's going to impact the property values and the fact that that was a neighborhood, now for the last umpteen years. These are the people who carried Lewiston economically over the decades, and we're going to impact them now. Well, that's what I have a total problem with.
Okay. So, so we need to come to some kind of consensus so we can move on.
Yeah, I'd love to get us there. I don't know if that's useful. Amy, were you about to say something?
I was just going to ask, Michael, I didn't quite understand your comment about a distressed property. So if there's a distressed six-unit in a neighborhood that has been that way for a while, and somebody comes in and wants to open a family shelter there or a three-unit, right?
If it was a six-unit, I don't believe it would be in the NCA district, so...
Yeah, he's concerned about the NCA, which is the, the single-family home areas.
Well, even a single-family, if it's a distressed property and somebody's going to purchase it and turn it into a shelter, they're going to have to do an awful lot of work to it, right? Because that's a change of use, and we'd have to bring it up to, um, better standards. So the actual physical plant, right, that property would actually need to be improved quite a bit in order to become one of these.
I, I'm familiar with, uh, distressed properties in Lewiston, past and present. Uh, there's at least one on Pleasant Street that I can think of. Uh, it's not a good place to put, uh, homeless shelter, but, uh, if it became a matter of right, uh, no, would need...
It wouldn't, none of them would be a matter of right, they would all be conditional use.
Okay.
And reviewed by us.
And reviewed by us.
But, but if they met every condition as well, now there's an issue. I, I'm thinking, uh, uh, I'll go there. Um, there, there was a property on Peter Boulevard a number of years ago that became so distressed that it added red X on it. It's a single-family. Uh, that could probably fit into, uh, the first, uh, block of the matrix. Uh, and, uh, if that's what operated there, uh, that might actually distress, uh, all of the, uh, values of the people around them, simply because it's a homeless shelter. I say it does not belong in the NCA, period. Uh, there really wasn't anything wrong, uh, with the idea of the original overlay. First meeting, we, uh, started discussing it, and somehow it got into, okay, let's not review the whole thing and all of its, uh, components and, uh, ignore, uh, the concept of just relaxing the, uh, the buffers, uh, for the original zone. Uh, maybe the zone could even be, uh, expanded a bit. Uh, but now it's the entire city, um, and it includes, uh, IRA where some, uh, if I'm not mistaken, where some of the highest property values are. Uh, something could go out there. I mean, probably not because the property, you know, would be a little more expensive to acquire, but, uh, it wouldn't be, uh, totally, uh, unavailable.
I haven't heard any agreement to the overlay district, which zones that it would include, or anyone specifically speaking to NCA. And I'm hoping that that's the point we get to by agreeing on some of the things we say, yes, that's the thing, and now that we've named that and agreed to what that thing is, we will or won't allow it in this place and in this way. And I would like for us to get through some of the areas of agreement so that we can get to the piece that's a sticking point for you. And I'm wondering how we can do that without coming back to NCA with each discussion point. Can we all agree that NCA won't be considered for shelters until we get to the point about talking about the map?
Mm-hmm.
Do we agree with that, with each other?
Just, just to be clear, though, so we're going to amend what's in this matrix here so that small and medium 24-hour youth program shelters will be not permitted in industrial, not permitted in riverfront, and not permitted in NCA? Is that...
I think that's the conversation we're actively having right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm wondering about.
So are you proposing that? Do you want to put some language that can be acted on?
Yeah, I'm not, not proposing that. Um, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're clear that that's what we're...
Then I'm going to make a proposal.
That, that's what we're actually talking about, so we're, we're not talking about the other stuff there.
So, no, and I think that's like, can we have an agreement that we are not agreeing to where these will be applied? Because right now, the overlay district is TBT, and we will be TBD-ing later. And so right now, doesn't have to mean NCA, for the sake of our ability to talk about it.
But if we're TBD-ing later, we're doing that for the, uh, gray boxes.
Yes, yes.
We're not doing it for the two white boxes.
Right.
So after this discussion, I suspect that it'll be settled that it will only be a exclusion of industrial and riverfront, and I'm not ready to go there with respect to NCA and potentially commercial.
I'll restate my question one more time. Can this planning board, for the purposes of the remaining conversation, agree that NCA is, for the moment, excluded from the overlay district until we're prepared to talk about the overlay district? So that we can talk about these categories and uses as it relates to buffers, multi-family screening, where that makes sense?
I think the disagreement that I'm hearing here is that the two white boxes do not include the overlay district. And so Michael doesn't feel comfortable moving on from those until we talk about, uh, the inclusion. And I think, Shannon, what you're saying is...
Is I'm hoping to return back to the white boxes to have that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, you want to have that conversation, but let's not bring the overlay district into that conversation.
Or any specific... Mark?
Why wouldn't we just have a vote on the white boxes? Get rid of the hanging fruit?
Right.
And move on from there.
From there. I love that. Will you propose something for us to vote on?
Me personally, sure.
Thanks.
Uh, that the, uh, family and youth 24-hour programs for small and medium be available for all zones except industrial and riverfront, and no buffers apply.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Michael?
I can't support that, and it is a deal breaker on the entire, uh, matrix.
So then I'd alter the proposal if you're so willing to say the first box would read all zones except industrial, riverfront, and NCA. Is that what you would like to be proposing, I think? Is the NCA included in box one as an exemption?
One and two?
The sticking point for you?
The white boxes.
You said one, uh, both?
Both white boxes.
I was just taking it one at a time, but if we can bang out two at the same time, I'm for that.
Let's both put both white, both white boxes in. So, Michael, you're saying industrial, riverfront, and NCA, if they're, they're restricted from there, you are willing to go with the two white boxes? Small, medium, 24 hours?
Yeah, forsaken, yeah, forsaken, moving on. Yes, if it's an exclusion from boxes, you know, whatever the box names would be, family and youth, uh, small and medium.
Twenty-four hours.
If they're exempted from both, I could support that and move on.
Okay.
Make no guarantees on the final analysis, though.
For any of us, I hope.
Okay. So consensus, Roger?
Yes.
Mark?
On including NCA?
Yeah.
No.
Excluding NCA, industrial, and riverfront.
Well, he's including as an exclusion.
Including NCA as an exclusion, no.
Michael?
Yes.
Shannon?
Also no.
Uh, Alex?
No.
And Amy?
No.
I also do not agree with NCA.
Okay, so is there consensus, is there a majority that industrial as it stands?
No, the motion is currently industrial and riverfront, no buffers apply.
Right.
And that's up for a vote because it's been seconded.
Okay, so Roger?
I'm sorry, I thought it was the exemption that it was up for the vote.
Right.
No, no, my motion was to...
Riverfront and industrial.
Right, to define these two, um, small and medium-sized occupants for your family, youth, and 24-hour programs to be allowed in all zones excluding, uh, industrial and riverfront, and that no buffers apply.
And Alex, uh, seconded it, so let's... Roger?
No.
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Michael?
No.
Shannon?
Yeah.
Uh, Alex?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So we have a consensus that that is...
We have a majority.
We have a majority, I'm sorry.
I just want to remind the board that this is a straw poll at this point.
Yeah, yeah, this is a straw poll. Yeah, yeah, I'm not this, I'm, I'm just...
So we can just do that thumbs up next time, okay?
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, no seconding needed.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Is there any desire discussion buffers applying in those same two boxes? We didn't include that in the last conversation. I'm comfortable...
No, he did, he did mention, his, his motion said no buffers apply.
Thanks.
Just exactly what it reads.
Right.
Except that we added riverfront.
So just for staff's purposes...
There's Mr. Chittam.
The, the two white boxes would now read all zones but industrial and riverfront, no buffers apply.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And speaking of riverfront, I think we had some questions for Counselor Chittam, and now he's here. I'm wondering if now would be an opportune time to sort of talk about audience comment. I think, you know, we're, we're headed someplace here.
Okay, sure. Um, Mr. Chittam, we have your memo. Would you, uh, go to the podium, please, because we'll have some... So your, your comments were regarding the conditional use of all zones for the, um, for shelters in the riverfront as well as, uh, in the, in the industrial as well as the riverfront. So our question is, riverfront for all of the, the shelters in our matrix or ju, or do you know what our matrix is? Our matrix is, he does not.
I, I do not, I'm sorry.
Okay, so our matrix, uh, we, we've been discussing a small, one to 10 occupants and a medium, one to 10 occupants. One to 16, I mean, 11 to 16. Okay.
I, I did, I did review the, uh, tape of your last planning board meeting, so I'm familiar with the concept, yes. I didn't know you codified it or...
Well, we haven't codified it, it's just, it's just a, a working matrix. So, uh, you know...
Our question is, did riverfront feel important to you to be bundled with industrial and the exclusion of shelters for family and youth 24-hour care in small and medium categories? Or was riverfront really for the larger and other uses?
When I first made those comments, uh, several months ago, uh, it was my intent to say, uh, industrial simply does not have a place for, um, so that's besides the point.
We agree there.
I think the question is for riverfront, and you had not, at that point, differentiated among different types of shelters.
Correct.
Um, I still feel that the riverfront is the crown jewel of the city and that perhaps, um, any kind of shelter there would be less than desirable at than other places. However, if you've differentiated, uh, youth and family shelters and small, medium, and large shelters, there may be room. In fact, there is a shelter in the riverfront zone right now. Uh, and it may be, it may be beneficial to take a look at, uh, riverfront usage for some of the smaller, uh, and less impactful shelters. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we, do we want to have any other, if there's any other comments from folks in the audience? I mean, I think, in my mind, like, this is a contentious point for the board, and perhaps there's some of that in the audience as well.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to it? Please, uh, state your name and your address and three minutes, please.
Bob McCarthy, uh, 34 Rejane Avenue. Um, I'm having a little difficulty with the, um, the youth part of this and having, um, 16 youth in a shelter in a residential neighborhood. Um, there may be a lot of those children that are on the straight and narrow, but there can be a lot of them that are not, that are troublesome youth, um, not following, you know, they're homeless for a number of reasons, not following their parents', um, rules, um, being arrested. There's any number of reasons why these kids could be, um, homeless. And to group them all together, I could just imagine what, 16 homeless youth or 16 troubled youth in one residential neighborhood, the kind of mischief that they could cause in that neighborhood. So I think that, I think you're stretching it, put it going to 16 on a youth shelter in a residential neighborhood. I understand the one to 10, and I'm comfortable with that, but I think going the medium shelter anywhere in the city is just uncalled for. And I just think it's going to affect a lot of people. I can imagine, you know, my mother's 94 years old, I could imagine a 16 youth shelter being put next to her house and she, have, her having to deal with that. And she's lived in the house for 72 years, and to be, um, inconvenienced at the minimum or really bothered, um, isn't, isn't right. It's, it's not the right thing to do, and I, I really think you need to revisit that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little context thing, really quick.
Go ahead.
Um, when we had originally discussed, uh, family and youth programs, we had discussed them as separate, and then I think at our last meeting, we were sort of like, well, we're talking about them having the same restrictions, so let's put them together. So perhaps, uh, a way of addressing that is sort of thinking about teasing them apart again. Just wanted to throw that out. But let's keep going with public comment.
Okay, yeah.
Your name and, um, your address, please.
Hi, my name's Lisa Jones. I live on Hogan Road. I'm in Ward Two, but I also own property in Ward Seven. I'm the one that bought the old Cassiel's Day Spa. Um, I'm putting a childcare center there, which is why I am very interested in listening to these conversations.
Yeah.
Um, I wasn't at the last meeting either, but I had emailed Shelley. Did my email make it to you guys? Okay, so you know exactly how I feel and what my concerns are. Um, a second concern I had just listening to Bob now, um, Sun Journal put out an article today saying New Beginnings is looking for an emergency appro, so you know, they're considering these 18 to 24-year-olds youth.
Hmm.
So I think that goes back to definitions. And, um, as a side note, I'm enjoying listening to your conversations.
Thank you. Okay, um, so what do we, so when we're talking about youth, what are we talking about?
I thought that was already in the definitions.
Okay, let's...
Yeah, let's get into definitions.
I don't know that you're going to find that in there.
It's in that definitions that we had last, last...
It was there, yeah.
But it doesn't, it doesn't say a, it doesn't have an age.
Youth shelter means a facility is defined in the Lewiston Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Article 16, this definition shall be divided into two categories.
Yeah.
Those facilities which provide 24-hour programming for their occupants and those facilities which do not provide 24-hour programming for their occupants, this definition shall be further divided into small, medium, and large.
Yeah, but the definition for youth, uh, shelter, I believe, in, uh, or youth services was 21 and younger, if that's, if I remember correctly from the definitions we provided last, uh, last meeting, and they are in the...
In that section mentioned, I think.
Yeah, if you flip to the, um, Chapter 22 Business Licensing that was handed out, um, the second page, it's under H homeless children or youth, means a person 21 years of age or younger who is unaccompanied by a parent, guardian, or caregiver, or part of a homeless family. Um, and then the council was adding language about, um, the state definition for homeless youth being applied.
Oh, yeah. Do we have that?
Yeah, it's right here.
No, I saw that, but you said in addition to that, the council was considering, different language? Did I just-
No, this is-
No, this is the language that they're looking at passing second meetings.
Only game of towns is what we're looking at right here.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, what?
Only game of towns is what we're looking at right here.
Yes.
Which is not two different versions.
That's right.
I, that's going to be really important because our state and federal government qualifies youth-serving programs differently depending on the program in DOL, DHHS, and other areas. And so our 21-year-old definition will not match up necessarily. Do we know what main state housings definition of youth is and how that lines up with this one, given that it's housing?
I, I recall that this definition came from a state definition in our last meeting. I wish I had the packet with me.
So if somebody works with multiple youth-serving programs, youth is defined by different state agencies differently across age. There's not a state cutoff.
Got it.
Nor a federal cutoff. It depends on the service or program.
Let me, let me rephrase that. I think this was pulled from a state definition. It would be interesting to figure out which one.
The state legislature defines it as 21.
Okay, so it was using the legislature's definition, not the program's definitions.
Does it do think that's going to matter?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, anything over 21 is an, is an adult.
Right.
Right, and so regardless of how those programs get funding, tough cookies. 21 is the, what we consider adult, and that's what the state considers adult.
Couldn't agree more. Just making sure we're on the same page about it.
State definitions.
No, I agree, but if the state is defining it as adult, I mean, if the consist, if the question is, oh, well, you know, we want to have 18 to 24, we consider that youth. Well, no.
No.
That's not you, that's not youth. And then in the other consideration was, well, yeah, but a lot of programs get funding based off of whether they're serving youth and they define that as maybe 26 and younger or 24 and younger. Okay, that doesn't, that doesn't change zoning requirements nor does it change the definition of what the city considers youth or apparently what the state considers youth.
Hopefully that information puts our public comment at ease, knowing that it's not up to 24.
Bob and I are talking more, like, when I sit here and listen and you're talking about-
Sorry.
Could you go to the podium so that we can have it on record?
Please.
Thank you.
When I hear you talk about youth and family shelters, I, I picture younger children. I don't picture cohorts of teenagers in a home with staff. So I think it was Alex that mentioned it a minute ago. Maybe you should parse it out.
Well, so, yeah, our, we originally had them parsed out, and I'm trying to sort of go back in my brain here. I feel like one of the discussion points was sort of bringing up, well, we do have youth shelters that are larger and are integrated into neighborhoods and have done so very successfully, which, you know, that's kudos to the operators, right? But that's what I sort of remember bringing us to this sort of conclusion that we could sort of bring everything together and treat it a little differently. Because I think we did talk a little bit about, well, medium is, you know, 16 youths different than, you know, 16 people total, that's a couple of family units. And I think where we ended up on that was, no, we're going to bring them together because of, you know, existing experience with existing organizations in the community. And not, not saying that in a values judgment way, I'm just trying to, to, to provide context on how we're, we're at, the position we're at now.
I think we actually arrived at it last, last meeting.
Yes.
As a result of simply, as we were going through those different classifications, it ended up being that it was no different.
Exactly, yeah.
We said, okay, well, where can they be? It was no different than family or medium size. So the staff was like, well, there's no difference, might as well classify them the same.
Put them together, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
But you're right, we can tease it back out.
We can see that, so let's, let's move on, okay? I mean, let's, let's, because if we keep going, we're just-
Come on, midnight.
Yes, I, I really don't want to be here till midnight, so-
And don't take up a new agenda item. We've already, there's one and we've taken it up. So we are on this till we're done.
Yes.
Regardless of nine o'clock.
Yeah. So, I'm, okay, so let's, let's move on to, and we'll come back, okay? I mean, this is not, none of this is engraved in granite. We're, we're just, this is just discussions. So the large, okay, so let's, let's move on down the same column. Family and youth, 24-hour program would be limited, the large, over 16 occupants would be limited to an overlay district to be determined. No buffers would apply. However, multifamily screening applies. Now, I'm not quite sure what that means.
So the discussion was to use whatever buffer requirements we have for new multifamily buildings being built.
Oh, okay, all right.
So what staff put into the materials that you have, where we did the conditional use permit and we talked about buffers, one of the criteria would be for large shelters that they need to follow the design standard buffer. So-
Okay.
You may require, remember that there's different ways to meet the buffer standard with fencing, with berms, with vegetation.
Okay.
So it would be treated like a commercial use. So when we're locating a commercial use next to a residential use, that is required to have the screening between that and the residential use.
Okay, I-
But that, that was kind of how staff interpreted what you had said more specifically.
Right, right. Now that you say that, I recall that, that we discussed that. Yes, Shannon, go ahead.
So knowing that this is a little bit about the mapping and the use table, can I safely assume for the sakes of this conversation as we go forward, that in any place that a multifamily, 16, that's, is that three, two units? If that, if that multifamily is not allowed in a district, there's no version of our overlay district allowing a use that is not allowed. So let's take NCA for example. There's no multifamily allowed there. Do we have to say excludes?
Well, it-
NCA, or is it?
They aren't, but they are because of 2001, LD2, 2001 with the-
So I'm just looking to get clear on it, I guess.
The multi-units. We, we discussed that last week, unfortunately, last meeting.
Quick and sorry.
No, that's fine. It's, it's-
Could you guys answer that for me and help me understand?
Right.
So I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but Lucy is right that at this point in time, we don't have any zones in which only single-family units are allowed because of LD2003, an existing single-family is allowed to add up to two additional units. And on vacant lots, you're allowed to add two units or possibly four if you're in the growth district. It does depend on whether you have a large enough lot and frontage. And then any lot, regardless of whether it meets lot size or frontage, can have an accessory dwelling unit. So that would be essentially two units. I, I don't know if that exactly answers your question. As far as Steph was trying to address the, the comment of multifamily screening, we weren't looking at where multifamily is currently allowed. We were looking at what type of screening we require for multifamily and then saying that that screening would apply regardless of whether multifamily isn't allowed use. We're not thinking about that. We're only thinking about whether shelter isn't allowed use as proposed. Does that answer it or not?
It's great.
If you want to ask the question again, I'll take another stab.
Well, no, I mean, I think, I think Lucy gets to it. And so, like, for my, just to, like, start from putting something out there, there's no version of 16 or more family or youth, even if it's 24-hour, that makes sense to me in a single-family residential neighborhood. Even if your neighbor in that neighborhood that you're referencing adds two units and put in both sets of in-laws in the backyard, that family unit, even if it's intergenerational, I think is still what most people are looking to preserve in the NCA district. And there is nothing, because of LD2003, there is nothing that precludes 16 or more occupants being put into a single-family plot unit because of LD2003. So we do need to be explicit. That's my, like, should we name it explicitly or does our general zoning take care of it? And you are saying, nope, 2003 made that hard.
Yeah.
We do need to be explicit.
Right.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Yeah, and we also don't have family size limitations. So while we do define a family as like a family unit with three additional unrelated people living with them, the family unit is not limited. So whether it's a two-person family or an 18-person family, that's, there's no distinction.
Right, but these would not be a family. These would be-
Absolutely.
Unrelated, unrelated. So I think we need to specify where, you know, we don't want this. And I would definitely say NCA, maybe NCB.
I think that's in the mapping, though. Like, as we define the overlay district-
Yeah, we can, we can-
And which other zones it includes or doesn't include. I mean, you know, my opinion, it's now out there, but-
Right.
Wouldn't it be just easier just to define which, just like we defined that it's, those are, those are for all zones, wouldn't it be easier to just define which zones that they're in?
So-
So for example, NCB, UE, Centreville, Downtown Residential, and Mil. Let's say that those are the districts that we limit them to, those zones that we limit them to that, that-
Yeah, but that's the overlay.
So-
It does feel like that's the next step or maybe quick-
Is that the exact of the overlay?
Yeah.
Just a quick con- context thing.
But I'm not ready for that next step because there's one other piece. Okay, Alex?
I think in-
Yeah, but, okay, so in any case, why can we just-
Wait for the discussion to be over with.
Everything should be complying basically to the downtown district overlay.
So, context, I think last meeting, we talked about, touched on this a little bit, and I remember bringing up, do we want to restrict based on zones or do we want to restrict on an overlay? You know, I heard someone just mention, hey, maybe we don't want it in NCA or NCB. If you took that approach, the current overlay is in NCB, so it's going to change what that overlay looks like. So I think that is an area that we could make a decision on is, do we, what tool do we want to use to limit geographic area? Do we want to work with existing zoning, which I'm personally in favor of because the zoning sort of dictates the intensity, right? Or do we want to do it on a purely geographic basis where it can span multiple zones and create situations where, you know, this side of the street is a no and this side of the street is a yes, even though they're in the exact same zone and have the exact same intensity? I think it makes much more sense to look at this from an, you know, what type of structure is there?
Zones.
What, you know, if, if it's a, a big bulky building that holds a lot of people, that's a big bulky building that holds a lot of people.
Right.
Yeah, but if we limit it just to the overlay with a conditional use in NCB, for instance, now you're talking limited number of people in that area that's going to be applying for an application. Whereas if you have everything downtown, which has basically the reason why the overlay is there is the services are available, it's a confined area where these people are under control.
Yeah. Shannon, and then Michael.
Ah, I'm for having a zone conversation and not a district conversation. I think that is certainly easier for us to apply in our process going forward and is logical based on we already set things. Before we jump into that, not that that's where we're headed next, I do think it's really important, and this is for your sake, to recognize that even, A, everywhere we say they can be, and if you pick one zone and we say that's the zone and that's the only place they, still even in that scenario, it will always be a conditional use and come to us. There is no version of any size or service population of which they set up a shelter and this planning board doesn't discuss it because it's a conditional use. So like, we fundamentally need to agree and understand that to be able to have a productive conversation. The second piece is, again, great, there's one district, it's Centreville, that's where this conversation leads. Even within the one or multiple zones that we choose, we can further restrict use by the buffers. So saying it's okay in this commercial district doesn't mean that we can't put buffers in that protect the concerns you might have about it being in the commercial district. And I'm just naming those tool levers because it would be really easy to get to a place where no one's good. Nope, there's no zone. And if we're using the finesse, the scalpel instead of the hammer, then, then we're able to use buffers to ensure that your childcare needs are met and that your mother's needs are met potentially with buffers in districts that allow more options based on these different ways of categorizing use, duration, population served in size. So I'm just like trying to name that there are those different levers that we can pull because I feel like everything's going to have a conditional use and we'll have to approve it. Currently, that's the thing that, that we're talking about and that there's been consensus on. Is that right?
Yes, and I also want to point out, because I think you alluded to it, setbacks are determined by use on our chart. And so certainly the setbacks for shelters could be greater in some districts than other commercial uses. So that's also another tool. In addition to the, the buffers and screening, setbacks can also be used.
Michael?
I understand that buffers are a tool. I do like the idea as what was posited that the zones that were identified, Downtown Residential, NCB, Centreville, and I may be missing one, Mil, would be an expansion of the current overlay and I don't have a problem with that. It is a slight expansion of the current overlay and it doesn't impose on zoning areas that I have for concerns. And, and I think it's tenable at that, at that juncture. I mean, further restrictions on setbacks and buffers and stuff, fine, there's current buffers in the current overlay. We had discussed possibly reducing those buffers at one point, keeping the overlay and simply reducing the buffers to provide more possibilities. Because as we saw in recent years, there seemed to be only one location that could be used and it fell through. By design, maybe, or that's just the way it happened. Reducing those buffers could probably have opened up some other possibilities that weren't there. And expanding it in all of CV and Mil, probably limited availability. So there's probably not much to be concerned about in those areas that's not in the current overlay. I, I understand concerns of other projects that may be happening might preclude or, or the desire to preclude, but reality dictates what the needs are in order to facilitate a, a shelter facility. So I'd have no problem with expanding it to those zones, which was four or five zones.
Mark?
I'm just, I'm not a big fan of the overlay district, just because to, to my mind, we have the zones for a reason. And then the overlay district includes different parts of, like, for example, the office residential. And to me, that makes no, no sense. So I would be, I would rather just say, well, look, it's fine in, you know, NCB and Downtown Residential, but, and, or whatever else that we select, but then not doing this overlay district. This overlay district doesn't make much sense to me.
And I agree with you.
I, I have to agree that the overlay district doesn't make a lot of sense to me either. It didn't, it didn't two years ago when, when it was created and, and it still doesn't. So I would prefer to go by, I would prefer to go by zones than, than to go by overlay district.
Okay.
Michael?
Two years ago, the overlay district did make sense to me. I understand some of the thought process that may have gone into it. At this point, I have no problem with expanding it to those zones that we were just talking about. I guess it's synonymous. What I'm suggesting probably creates a non-need for an overlay district because I'm mentioning Downtown Residential, NCBC, V, Mil. And that might actually reduce certain geographies to the current overlay and increase certain geographies to the overlay. And I'd have no problem with those four, if my count is correct, for this particular item in the matrix.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that the majority would prefer to go by zones for this particular large 24-hour.
Well, really, for any, for any of them.
I was positive for everything.
For every of them, yeah. And then it's just a question of defining which zones each are available, are allowed in.
Okay. So it sounds like we've got a, not a consensus, but a majority consensus.
What was the fourth, I'm sorry, what was the fourth zone that you had mentioned?
Mil.
We have Mil, CV, and DR. What was the fourth?
NCB.
Yeah.
And those are places that you guys are saying would be the only places that it'd be allowed in this conversation?
For the, for the large family and youth 24-hour.
For the large, yeah, family and, and 24 hours. So, so the, the light gray.
Is OR in that list?
I'm sorry?
OR?
No.
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 Because in the, in the current, in the current overlay district, only a few blocks of OR are included and it's either, you either include it or exclude it. You might as well exclude it.
Hmm. I, I was thinking about it, you know, I live in NCB in one of the areas that's in the current overlay district, and a lot of the properties that are in OR, they're my neighbors, basically. And functionally, the flavor is pretty much the same between the two. That, that is a very, you know, Main Street OR specific thought process, but I do wonder- But I do wonder, you know, looking at the other places that we have O R zoning, if that is really a bad fit.
Well, again.
And just like it increases a little bit more space.
You know, in the interest of building a majority, if
Yep.
four districts have been mentioned by Mr. Markot, who.
You mentioned it first.
Well, yes, but, but I mean, if he, seeing as he has expressed significant concerns or serious concerns about where the, where shelters are being placed, and if he seems amenable to those four districts, why push the issue?
Yeah.
Why not just say, okay, well, I can agree with those four, right?
I mean, I'm pushing the issue just a little bit, just to see, just, just from, just, I'm looking at it from a logical point.
Specifically for large and family, just, I'm just like, this conversation's about this one box, right?
About that, that one box.
Okay.
That one box there. O R, just because flavor-wise, it's very similar to N C B, at least in my, my neck of the woods. Thinking about over on East Ave, again, sort of, it's near the school. Like, it seems like there's possibility there for a good thing to happen. And it's not a huge amount of land citywide, but it seems like it's in specific places where it could be really beneficial.
So if I may, so just so we're clear, you said it's just this one box.
Yes.
But if we go back to our past meetings, this one box correlates to just about all of the remaining boxes.
Unless we, unless you guys want to go back and start giving them up differently now.
But this, this one box kind of replicates itself.
I don't know what I missed last time, but I am understanding that the desire is to do exactly what you just named. Just, just to be clear about the feeling that I'm getting is that it feels like perhaps there's three districts that small and medium would be good for and large, but then there's maybe five that small and medium would be good for, but only in a 24-hour. I do think that you're getting to that level of granularity in the feedback you're getting today, and I would love to be gut-checked and wrong about it. But that's why I kept saying one box, because I believe for non-family and youth, I think large should also be considered in, in the industrial districts. And so like, and maybe I missed my boat last time, it's fine. But so that's why I'm asking if it's one box. I'm not positing it should be, but that's what I'm trying to clarify before I give my sentiment about what makes sense.
We can definitely do that. I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible in terms of coming up with zoning regulations or codes, right? So it's much easier to have only two options, right?
Right.
As opposed to, well, you also meet this, so now you can go into five or six. I'm perfectly, I'm perfectly happy expanding it if necessary, if it makes sense. For example, I don't see why industrial couldn't be included if they wanted to. But the purpose, but the purpose of limiting it and specifically saying, okay, well, these four districts we're going to consider when we, when we refer to what, an overlay district or a homeless shelter district, right? It just makes, to me, it just makes it easier.
So I wondered, oh, sorry, Amy, what are you going to say?
No, no, I mean, I feel like it would be helpful to look at the map and just sort of say, for all the gray boxes, where do we want to not have a gray B? So start there, because I think if we say we definitely don't want them in these areas, then there might be some gray area, and then we can have a conversation about why, why not. But I think it's easier to start with where do we not want them.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
I'd like for us to, and forgive me, please, honestly, I'd like to start with the non-24-hour programs for both adult and youth. Because in my mind of where a neighborhood, your mother, your childcare is impacted, it's when doors are shut and everybody's put out on the street and see you in 12 hours or 16 hours. Or that's where the most negative impacts of use or mischievousness or any of the other. It stems from that in my mind, and that feels really, like, I wouldn't mind a 24-hour program next to me. And I did have a not-24-hour program next to me, and I did mind that because of that impact. And I don't know of thinking about these groups of boxes in that way will help us get.
Okay, but do we want to finish the, this large over 16 family before we move on to the, to the other? Or is this all part of, part of it?
I thought it was helping us move on, but I agree.
No, that's.
Given that we were talking by zone, I think that was the big, that was the big thing.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, okay? Michael.
I was happy to look at this as the zones where it would be permitted. It makes the conversation go a whole lot easier than what was posited by Mr. Roy. And I reiterated the four, if I count right, zones. I'd make the motion to permit the overlay district, I'll get rid of that one. I'd permit the zones where large over 16 occupants, family and youth, 24-hour programs could be located anywhere in the C V, N C B, downtown residential, and Mill districts.
Okay, all right, and then a consensus, thumbs up? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yeah, do buffers apply with that?
No buffers.
No buffers apply, right?
No buffers.
Yes, okay, I'm good.
Okay, so one, one negative and six positives. So, okay, so that's, that's all, okay, so let's move on to Amy's proposal that the, the non-24-hours for both family and adults, where do we not want them?
Yeah, I'd be surprised if we get to the same spot on putting those two together.
I think, I think that, well, all right, so let's say, so let's say where, where do we not want them?
I've heard riverfront very consistently as a place that they should not be considered regardless of size.
Yep. Absolutely, right? Yeah, well, rural agricultural, all right? And we don't want them in, I mean, we don't want them out in the boonies because
I mean, there's.
They're not going to get there anyways.
I have a hard time with that and some other things that have been said tonight. So realistically, you could have a shelter that, and there is a shelter attached to a social enterprise that does farm as a mean of teaching a bunch of things and sustainability. So like, who are we to say what kind of program is or isn't going to work? I can see a farm being converted to house a whole bunch of people and it being maybe the best version of a shelter we could have in the city. So I don't, I don't automatically start with that not making sense.
Well, I was just going down the list on, that's in the map, that's, that's why I was doing it, okay?
I would be in support of saying that for non-24-hour programs, that rural agricultural doesn't make sense because of the fact that it is a non-consistent.
Well said.
Right?
Right, I would agree. I mean, they could be, a 24-hour program in R A is, is fine.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be under.
Stuff to do.
There's, yeah, there's something to do, they're kept busy, they're, they're not, you know, thrown out and, and here.
Yeah.
Get the hell out of the way.
Yeah.
Sorry, get out of the way, and, you know, so that, that was my, my logic. And.
So just to be clear, we're, right now, the discussion is.
Non-24-hour.
And Shannon, did you just say that you would be surprised if we reached different conclusions for the youth versus the adult?
I think it'll be by size and not by, like, if you're kicking people out on the street for part of the day, I don't know that it really matters which population you're kicking out on the street.
Yeah, I don't.
I think we might say small versus large would be okay in different places, but I think generally speaking.
Just wanted to make that clear. I, I sort of was like reading it as the other thing, so just wanted to clarify that.
We can take them one at a time, whatever works.
Michael.
I see all nine of the remaining boxes in the matrix as being more intense than the one that we just decided on. So as far as which zones that they would be permitted, as opposed to which zones they would not be permitted, I'd stick with the same four zones. I mean, listening to the R A argument, and as long as the conditions were put in place, I would be open to listening anyway as far as opening it up to the R A in addition to the four previous. All nine of these are more intense than any of the first column, so that's a concern. And I don't see a reason why we couldn't do, if we're giving these boxes a number of some sort, column two, row one, and column four, row one, could be the same.
I agree with Mr. Markot that really for all non-24-hour programs and 24-hour programs, personally, going beyond the four districts that we, the four zones that we mentioned, I wouldn't be in support of that. Just because, for his exam, his exact reasons, they're more intensive, more problematic.
And, and a lot of the districts are, oh, a lot further from services that they need. So they, they would be better, sounds concentrated in certain areas where services are available. Because normally, and I'll pick on R A again, you know, there are not a lot of services out in the rural agricultural area for people, whether they're youth, the families, or, or adults.
Just to be a devil's advocate on the R A.
No, no, I'm just.
I, I don't know where the support, the non-support is on this. But, because I'm hearing some negative views on the R A. But I don't know if this could be done in the form of conditions. If somebody was to make a proposal that we want to put up a shelter in the R A, and this is what we intend to do within that model, and that model was a farm program, then how does that get codified in order to permit that under those conditions? Wouldn't want to have an R A, just simply put up a shelter and that's it. But if there was a program associated to it that made sense in that zone, then I'd be amenable.
Well, yeah.
And to me, that sort of sounds like you're talking, you know, if we're talking about programming, right? And that would, I would assume by what you're saying, mean like programming all the time, not just some of the time.
So that's a 24-hour program.
Yeah, if it's a farming program or something, that fits the rural agricultural.
Wouldn't that fall under conditional use?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I think what we're talking about is where the zones that we will then do conditional use within.
No, we're going to do conditional use on all of them.
Nope, I think that's the conversation.
Different conditional uses in different zones.
So when you, just for my own understanding, when you propose, and I want to make sure I'm getting the right four, C V, N C B, D R, Mill, so those are the four places, there's some agreement on this side that like would put them there. Yep. That those would be the places, and any, we would never receive or consider a permit in any place other than those four, including industrial.
Correct.
Because it would not be a conditional use.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and I would be really willing to support those four for both of the non-24-hour programs. I struggled when you brought the 24-hour program in.
For adults, do you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do, like, I see industrial and some other places being a permitted conditional use, of which we had to agree. Our, our industrial neighborhoods might provide the right kind of infrastructure, already have the bus routes in them. Are by definition also less likely to have the buffering interactions that we're naming around schools, parks, yada, yada.
The only reason why I say that is because, and, you know, somebody can try to convince me otherwise, but to my mind, adults with no children, no spouses or anything like that, non-family, non-youth adults. To me, it seems that they're more likely to be, you know, homeless as a result of mental health issues, substance abuse issues. Even though, granted, I understand that there are issues, you know, there are, there are people who'd be homeless due to domestic violence issues, but I, I just, even for domestic violence, let's say we wanted to have a home, a shelter, 24-hour shelter for domestic violence, I don't see why. Those four wouldn't be a good limitation, given the fact that the majority, to my mind, without any, any, you know, statistics, would more likely be substance abuse, mental health issues, you know, just plain irresponsibility, right? And not down on my luck, I lost my job, and I just need a place to stay. For those one or two people, well, you can, you can suck it up for a little bit and live, and live in a shelter down in these four districts until you can find another place to stay. But that's the only reason why, even for adult programs, 24-hour programs, I would still say it's much more practical just to limit it to the four because the vast majority is probably going to be best suited in that area.
Go ahead, Shannon.
The, instinctively, a lot of that has been my experience as well.
Yeah.
The reality is when you look at the available parcels, inventory and infrastructure within the districts we've just named, and when you apply the buffers, we're in many ways approving a district of which we've given you a place, but there's no actual physical place for you to be able to propose a shelter, which is the reason I keep advocating for industrial, because it's close enough to a lot of these.
Can I interject?
You mean, can you interrupt?
Interrupt.
Can I actually just finish my sentence, and then I'll hand it over?
Well, it's very pertinent to what you're pointing to. Those are not industrial, I don't believe. The two blue sections would be institutional office.
Yeah, that's the hospital in Bates College.
And that's not industrial. The industrial would be the purple, I believe, on the map.
Yep.
Which includes way out here, where we know there's industrialness in the industrial park.
Westminster.
Yeah, Westminster on one side, and Alfred Lloyd Parkway, the Gendron Project and such, that would be industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah, over on the left, it's Fire Slate.
I just want to make sure you're on the same.
No, thanks, but, yeah, I mean, we've, I think there are, our existing inventory and infrastructure relates well to those same spots for those same reasons. And we expect teens and young adults who don't have licenses to get the U S M L A C, and they do it. And we have buses that service them. And so I think there are a lot of, the reality is, and in my opinion, the reason we're having this conversation at all is because the reality is that when somebody wants to propose a shelter, pick your box, there is not a physical place. Once they say, okay, these are the two areas, I can do it, cool, and they go parcel by parcel, there is not something that meets these criteria and follows building code and has space enough to be able to do it, which is why we've been pushing for reconsidering this so that we can actually have inventory that gets applied to the shelters while respecting neighborhoods and moms and kids, daycares and business owners. And that's the tension point that we're in. But the reality is, and I'm just going to be really candid because it's been two years of this conversation, we have a significant amount of people who are homeless on our streets. We have 700-plus homeless declared youth within our public school system. Correct me if I'm wrong, maybe the number's gone up. And we don't have a place, like we're saying, with all of our ordinances and our policies and our headlines, we'd like to make sure our people are taken care of, but then we don't physically provide locations to be able to do them. And for me, all of this work is not in service of parsing out, I don't know, valuable sub-populations or perceived programs. It's about saying like, somebody's going to be willing to be an operator and propose it and jump through our hoops and come in and get the permit and prove that they've met all the conditions. Is there even a place out there for them to do it? Or are we kind of saying we'd like to take care of our unhoused population in a but-not-here kind of way? And if that's the case, then that's, let's have that conversation, so talking about it zone by zone. But I think that's, that is the reason I keep coming back to industrial is because the reality of the four districts just named don't actually create much opportunity for a shelter to be created and address the issue.
261 is the last number that I've seen.
In the high school or the whole?
Lewiston, the Lewiston homeless student population, it's 261 as of 2023.
Okay.
Could have gone up in 2024.
Thank you. Michael.
When I look at the map and my understanding of why the council may have positioned to be all zones but industrial and riverfront is, industrial properties in Lewiston are limited. And we seriously need to take advantage of that for the tax base, for job opportunities and such. I'd have no problem, other board members might, to go into the institutional office for a zone that with certain blocks in the matrix might be permissible. I, again, I saw Shannon pointing to a couple of boxes where we may not be on the same page. I thought we were talking about columns two and four, row one. I don't know, Shannon was pointing to row three in the discussion.
I was pointing to both columns excluding the 24-hour program, so in your.
All three, all six of those, okay. Where family and youth. Uh, where, uh, family and youth, uh, non-twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, okay, that's, uh.
I don't want families or youth to be stuck in an industrial zone in a non-full-day program either. So I'm for that not being.
And, and, and I'm not sure what constitutes a full, uh, uh, see, non-twenty-four hour program. Uh, are they in school, are they not, as far as the youth?
I think it's the building locks up and sends people out, whether it's for an hour or twelve out of the twenty-four hours.
So, so that, uh, because institutional office would be, you know, within walking distance, at least to the high school. Uh, and so I'm just not sure if, you know, one or more of those blocks, you know, would make sense in that district. I just don't want to encroach on the, uh, industrial, uh, and riverfront and, as I've stated before, the NCA.
Mike, Mark.
Uh, so in the interest of expanding the area simply because there's not enough, um, places to develop it, I'd be fine with, uh, expanding the list of zones to UE. Um, industrial, uh, that's fine with me, I guess, but, uh, for, I'm talking about for, uh, you know.
Non-twenty-four.
Well, I mean, or, or even the large fam- you know, basically that set number, those set zones that we allow.
Yep.
That we could, you know, coin as the, uh,
Mm-hmm.
Shelter zones, right?
Right.
Right.
So you, you would want to add?
Well, I'm just saying in that, in the interest of.
Right.
Finding it, the other way that we expand the available, um, places is through the use of buffers, right? Or getting rid of the buffers, so.
Right. So you're saying for not, for the nine boxes, twenty-four hour and non-twenty-four hour, you know, small, medium and large. You're saying CV, NCBDR, Mill and the UE.
Right, just adding UE to the, to the four that we already had, for any discussion when we're saying, okay, where can we have shelters that other than family and youth twenty-four hour, small and medium.
Right.
Where else can?
Can, can we?
You're saying everything gray.
Everything that's gray.
That's darker gray.
Right.
That's, well, you're anything gray.
Anything.
Anything that's gray.
Any of it. Basically saying, look, if you're going, if the intent, again, because to my mind, it's much simpler to say, these are the shelter zones, right? Except for these two.
Right.
Uh, specific ones. These are the shelter zones and it's a list of, of zones. And then the only other way that we limit where they can be is through buffers.
Buffers and conditional with the conditionals.
Simply expanding the number of zones from the four that we just kind of, you know.
And we're adding another one.
Majority agreed to, to UE, uh, for an additional one UE, simply because of Shannon's argument that, well, even, even in those four, there's limited space or limited places where you could actually develop it. And that's not really going to solve the homeless po- po- problem if you say, yeah, well, you can do it here, but there's no place to buy, uh, no place to.
Right.
Develop.
So an additional fifth zone for all nine of the remaining blocks?
Yes.
Uh, ten. This one, this one too.
The ten.
So anywhere where, anywhere where it says overlay district to be determined, we basically say, well.
That's our overlay district.
Shelter zones are.
Instead of overlay district, we are now using a shelter zone list.
Zones, right.
And, and we're going back to the one that we had already done for.
Correct, and every, all of them that are gray.
Yeah. It just seems to me.
I think we're applying the wisdom from the one you already talked about to the rest.
And since the map is not, uh, one of the maps anyway is not, uh, not, uh.
Well, if you get the bigger one.
The bigger one, I see UE.
UE, there's quite a bit UE.
Goes down Lincoln Street and I forget the, uh.
Yeah, and then there's some on.
Address, Alex knows the address.
Uh.
Five fifty-one.
Five fifty-one.
Hey.
So, so UE would include five fifty-one link.
Yeah, and then there's, uh, some off of, uh, Main Street along the river.
Yeah, Main Street, uh, it seems to go out, uh, hard to determine the streets in the map, uh.
Just do, they're too small for me to read.
Uh, it looks like, uh, the, the turnpike, um, and some of the area behind where Gridiron would be, uh, which was, uh, once proposed to be a Walmart. Um.
Yep.
And I believe there's a UE, even though it's a different color, but it's the same color as the ne- neighbor.
OR UE in the middle there, yeah, next to the industrial.
Yeah, I, I saw the one, uh, yeah, right behind, uh, CMMC, uh, famously UE.
Hmm.
Uh, Urban Enterprise.
Yep.
Because there's a lot of Urban Enterprise, uh, or at least once was, not back there.
Okay.
And then the, uh, the old Wiseman Farm has two zones, OR for a portion of it and UE, which is right behind, uh, Phillips Elmet.
Mm-hmm, right.
That'd be a tough place to put something in, but, uh, that happens to be UE.
And then like the tiny little, little triangle bit, did we talk about that one?
Uh, where's the triangle?
So it's in between Mill and NCA.
Yeah.
Institutional Office.
Yeah, that's all part of the Lincoln Street and stuff.
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, oh, I see the little, yes, I see your little ring.
Is that Bartlett Street? I, I think that's Bartlett and I think it's behind the, uh, Public Works.
Is that the Public Works?
It includes that little street that comes off Bartlett.
Yep.
And the woods, uh, that, uh.
Willow Circle.
Willow Circle and, uh, points north. Very difficult area to do any development in.
Right, okay, all right. So what I'm understanding is all of the ten, um, districts that are in gray, whether they be family and youth large, family and youth, uh, twenty-four hour, family and youth non-twenty-four hour, adult twenty-four hour and adult non-twenty-four hour programs, all sizes, would be permitted in the CV, NCBDR, Mill and UE. Is that what we've, we've decided? Okay, thumbs up or down?
It was sideways, but I'm happy to tell you why.
Okay.
I'm, I'm also sideways.
Okay, so, but we, I, I see a majority thumbs up.
Yeah.
But, yeah, go ahead, uh, Amy.
At least those, at least those.
Yeah.
Is what I would say.
Right.
And there might be more, but I agree with those five.
You know.
I think it would be in, uh, if we could do it really quick, can we pull up GIS and just select those zones? And have a little graphic representation of what we just select? I'm, I'm having trouble with the alphabet soup right now and like looking at the map and trying to sort of visualize what that block of land looks like. Could we just?
I think that you'll, you'll find that the GIS map will probably confuse even more because there's no colors and the lines much harder to see.
But there isn't a way to like separate things out by zone, it's just like everything or nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's not, um.
All three layers.
What we have available is not selectable.
It does not have zoning layers.
Yeah.
Got it, there's no separate layer for each zone.
But I did have, I, I was hoping to, um, make one comment. Um, so this has been a great discussion and I don't want to throw a wrench in it, but I want to, um, come back to something that a few folks had talked about a few, um, thoughts ago. Which is contemplating a use, um, that might be agricultural dependence. So whether it be like therapy animals working on a horse farm or, um, you know, farming and ha- and combined with a shelter. Um, one way you could do that if there was an interest would be to, um, it's not uncommon in our list of uses to allow a use and then there's a footnote and the footnote will say if blah, blah, blah. So it could be if, um, related to an agricultural use. If on a parcel, three acres or greater, et cetera. So you could have different criteria that really makes it, you know, it really is about it being in the ag zone. It really is about it being on a farm or a larger parcel of land, that it's dependent on that relationship or dependent on a relationship with, um, a fraternal organization or a religious organization or something like that. So it could be part of a campus, you know, that, that someone's located. So there's a way to, to do that if there's an interest in having a relationship like that, um, built into allowing something in a zoning district where you might not allow it for any situation. But you might allow it specific to another use, so we could do something like that.
So you're, you're saying, if I, if I'm, if, so you're saying for the large youth twenty-four hour?
I didn't, I didn't specify.
You didn't specify, you're just.
I'm just saying like, that's a tool in the toolbox.
We can think about doing that.
Where our thumbs are sideways.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, the little, little numbers on here.
Okay. Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, Alex.
I was gonna just throw out an alternative proposal based on some of the feedback I heard from the group of, you know, it sounded like earlier we were talking about sort of large twenty-four hour youth shelters, maybe not fitting with the other nine. Um, and maybe smaller twenty-four hour adult programs not fitting with the other nine. Also recognizing that we don't want to have, you know, eighty different categories for this. I wonder if having three categories could be a compromise. Throwing that out there, not necessarily like trying to push for this, but.
Is it necessary if we are able to do it by zone anyway and then attach the conditional use and buffers to it?
Maybe, maybe not. But I just wanted to throw that out there as, here's another option that makes sense in my mind of small, small twenty-four hour adult and large twenty-four hour youth and family. Maybe the impact of that or the zones that we'd consider would have overlap both for, you know, therapy programs, cause that I would assume would be smaller, right? Um, I don't know, just throwing it out there, we don't have to take it up. I like the footnote idea quite a bit.
Shannon.
So my thumb would be a solid up and we make this really easy. If we said yes to the, if we could just say the five agreed districts, can we say that? The five minimum agreed districts, can we use that language so I don't have to say them all each time?
Right.
The five agreed minimum districts applying to all of the non-twenty-four hour programs as well as the adult twenty-four hour program in the small category? So like, I'm fully with you for all three sizes in each of the non-twenty-four hour programs.
Mm-hmm.
Those five, I'm in agreement.
Six.
The, six, thank you. The, the place in which that I'm a little wiggly and I just want to give you a starting point to get to consensus is, I'd like to see the large twenty-four hour program for adults include the industrial district. If somebody is wild enough to offer an operating agreement and propose a shelter for forty people or a hundred guests, we're, we're, you would need to be looking at some of the larger po- parcels and existing inventory in some of the industrial and I just don't know how we get to large otherwise.
Hmm.
Could, could, uh, an applicant propose a contract zone that would then open up a parcel that was not already named in the zoning map? So, I don't know, like looking at highway business, I'm guessing that's Geiger, there's a big square box there. Like if someone came in with a contract zone on that hypothetically and said, I want to contract zone this to industrial, uh, because, you know, we decide later that Shannon's proposal of having industrial for that large, um, uh, project makes sense, they could do that. And the people at the time could decide, on the board could decide, is this a contract zone that we're gonna approve? And then if we do that, are we gonna can approve the conditional use on top of that? That, that would be a pathway, right?
Well, if it's a contract zone, then we can add whatever contract, uh, conditions we.
Okay.
Want. It's, it doesn't, it's not specifically a conditional use.
Do you offer that as a way to keep at five and then assume that any parcel in the city could be a contract or own res- zone requested anytime? Is that the?
That's ki- kind of where I'm going with it. Um, wh- what I think what I'm specifically wondering is like when we write up, here are the five zones. Is it like, here are the five zones at the time of writing or I'm guessing the answer is no.
It's always at the time of writing because anything can be changed at later date, so it's.
The geographic areas are s- set at the time of writing, but if the zoning changes in the future, we're gonna follow that, right?
Yeah, no, it follows the zone regardless of the boundaries of the zone.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
You're asking?
Yep, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay. Michael.
Just to follow up on that, and are you saying that, uh, a contract zone could supersede anything that's here in the first place? So whether certain things are limited to certain districts, uh, if somebody came in and we have plenty of contract zones, everything that's got the, uh, crosshatch, the red crosshatch.
Yeah.
Is something that was, okay, maybe it was NCA, maybe it was CB in one particular case. Uh, there's a contract zone on Firewell that we recently, uh, decided, Firewell and Charles Street.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, but, uh, the uses, uh, for that zone, you know, would not have permitted it. Uh, that's why they came for a contract zone.
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody wanted to put, if we don't include IRA, uh, into any of, uh, this matrix, but somebody came in with a proposal, uh, for using a piece of IRA and asked for a contract zone, stated what they were going to do with it, then it would open it up for a discussion.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, I just want to understand where that was going.
Does that make it, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So, shall we go to definitions?
Did we, sorry, I registered a concern with the matrix and I don't know that we're done there.
Okay.
Wicked, sorry, I know we'd all want to be.
Yep.
But.
Go ahead.
Uh, I would like, I'm looking this direction, gentlemen. I'm, I'm, I'm largely stating fully on board with all three in each column of the non-twenty-four hour programs being limited to the five that we've agreed on.
Yes.
Can we take a minute to talk about the twenty-four hour program?
Well, and, and you said, you mentioned the small.
Yeah.
Adult twenty-four hour.
And.
And putting it, so it would be the seven districts.
Yep.
The seven, the seven boxes.
Yep, so just in terms of where there is agreement and we'll tackle it from there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So.
Is that, is that an agreement for?
No. I think I understand what you're saying, it's not what I was saying.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So, is there a general, and I think this was maybe getting to a couple other sideways thumbs. So if we could just kind of break down that last proposal.
Hmm.
Can we all agree, and this is what your thumb would indicate, that all six boxes under the non-twenty-four hour programs for family, youth and adults would only be restricted to conditional use in the five agreed upon districts that we've talked about? Can we thumbs up that as a separate, so see, I think that, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't see it.
Assuming that that's the base for everything in the twenty-four hour adult programs. I'd like to talk about additional places that we might add based on size. Okay, so I would be very open to the large adult twenty-four hour program, building on those five by adding industrial only. Just for sheer scale of both need and infrastructure needed to, to make the large facility.
Okay. Thumbs, thumbs up, thumbs down? Roger, okay, so that's a, that's, that works, okay. You guys following along?
So that was a thumbs up for the adult twenty-four hour.
Twenty-four hour, large.
Adding industrial to the five.
Adding industrial to that.
Yes.
Another six, great.
Okay.
And then, and I'm happy to like stay where we are with the five for the medium, it's the small and parts. And I hear a lot of what you're saying, Mike, in terms of like the philosophy driving your, your thinking, being around tax investment, what are we incentivizing in this community, what's the impact of that? And so I would just, from that lens and in mostly full agreement, uh, I would like to propose that we consider adding NCB and DR.
NC. NCB is one of your five.
Great, so then keeping NCB, adding.
DR is one of your five.
Sorry, guys, I'd like to get.
Hotel residential?
No, it's the corridors. It's the corridors and they're no, 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 but feel free to add OR. Nope, the thing I'm really struggling to say at this point in the evening, and thanks for everybody's patience, is the three corridors is we spend a crap ton of time.
Okay.
A twenty-four hour small program is what's gonna get us the best impact, the least amount of issues that have been named in all of the different ways. And all of those are places with jobs and places with bus routes.
Mm-hmm.
And I would be very happy to consider that. Those are also places in which having redesigned them ourselves over the last year and a half are mixed use. There are residential units above shops, there's, right, and so there's already mixed use there. And so if we were a community to say, let's, let's address our homelessness issue, let's do it in small batches with twenty-four hour well-run programs in places where there's jobs and transportation. And it, and that feels like an area that we could expand opportunity.
So, so you're saying adding the, have the, the five plus our commercial corridors to the small.
Only, only, correct. That's what I'm proposing.
Okay, what about?
And can I just say, by commercial corridor, I think we mean community business and highway business.
I was trying to get to all the acronyms.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about along.
Then they just all started getting thrown out.
Along Lisbon Street, uh, Sabata Street and Main Street.
So from this map, it's CB, HB, OR.
Yeah, there's a couple of ORs.
And that covers them.
Yeah. Okay, so only the small, Michael.
Wicked, only the small.
Okay, that, that was my concern at the last meeting, no, when, no. Initially, we said no to NCA and corridors. And then last meeting, none, it slid into including NCA. And then last meeting, none, it slid into including NCA and all corridors. When I look at highway business and community business and office, uh, residential, that, that's where, uh, people from outside the community come in, that's the first thing they see. That's, no, those are the areas we want investment. Those are the areas where we want businesses to succeed and, and prevail. Uh, the other day I was, uh, driving down, uh, Lisbon Street going out of town and, and I saw another marijuana facility, uh, that I didn't realize was coming in. These are the things that, you know, destroy our neighborhoods. And neighborhoods are right there beside, you know, HB and CB in a lot of areas. Now, when you go down Lisbon Street, you have CB from probably the the Lewiston Mall down to a certain point and before you get to Pleasant Street, you're in HB all the way out. On Sabata Street and same thing, you know, once you get just beyond Fowell Street, it's HB all the way to Sabata's. Uh, but there's NCA on both sides of those, uh, already deepened lots. Now, those were deepened a few years ago, during a discussion that the council put forward and was approved here. Whether it was like hundred going to two hundred or whatever it was to allow more commercialization of our corridors, our, our commercial properties. I, I, I don't want to handcuff a, a community that's already struggling to get businesses in here and struggling to get people from outside of Lewiston to come into Lewiston and to do their shopping and their business. I know people that just want to avoid Lewiston, uh, at all costs. And, and the more that we open this up to marijuana shops and tattoo shops and homeless, now we're, we're going to get something that looks more like Detroit. And, and I, I don't want to go down that road. We, we need to have an economics development office who's out there trying to bring us industry. Use our industrial zones to the fullest capacity, like our commercial zones, our highway business zones. Go out there and, I just heard this today from a coworker. Let's encourage Market Basket to come to Lewiston. That would do a lot to bring people into Lewiston for their groceries. And that could be an anchor to more development, you know, once things start to uh, sun, put a little bit of sunshine on, on the situation. So I, I, I'm not looking to, to expand this anymore. I don't even like the industrial in the large over sixteen in the adult twenty-four hour program. But i- if that's going to make it into the final proposal, so be it.
So in summary, you just disagree with what I suggested?
Nope, not correct.
Okay.
And I, and I definitely don't want to encourage an expansion beyond what we've already done. Now, I, I, I'm actually entertaining, maybe I can support the final product even though my concerns and negative vote earlier, maybe, maybe not. But as things start to escape me, it's going to be a no vote in the end.
Okay, Mark?
Uh, so I can, I understand the intent, Shannon, but
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't be in favor of adding HB or CB for small adult twenty-four hours. First, because of simplicity sake as far as crafting the, the, the zones and then also again, uh, when it comes to homelessness for adults, it seems to me really the vast majority are, are mental health issues and substance abuse issues. And while I can, I can understand that, oh, well, maybe there's going to be, you know, a small, you know, adult twenty-four hour program that would be really great because it's, you know, along a bus route. Yeah, that might be great, but on the whole, might as well just say, eh, no. To me.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Amy, sure?
I would agree with Shannon, I would be amenable to adding those three districts, CB, HB, OR for the small adult twenty-four hour program.
All right, so let me make, let me make a proposal. So small twenty-four hour, um, adult program, the five CV, NCB, DR, MIL, UE and OR, HB and CB. Thumbs up or thumbs down? All right, cause four to three, so it's thumbs, thumbs down.
Great, so we're just.
Just the five?
Yeah.
Okay, what, now we've got the medium twenty-four hour, so I would say same place, okay.
Yeah.
I proposed that last time too.
Right, so, so we have covered them all.
Yes.
Quick question.
Sure.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
I know it's getting late.
Yeah.
Bear with me here.
Yeah.
If we got, if we did that same vote, but we were not including highway business, would that change minds?
No.
No.
No, okay, there we go.
It's, it's, because they're too mixed up.
No extra comment needed.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Does that put the matrix to bed?
Okay.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
The buffers, right? Unless we're going to keep the buffers as is.
How about if staff states what we've captured on the matrix based on discussion?
Before you do that.
Sure.
Let me just state this really clearly so it was asked and answered. Everywhere that buffers are described, I'm okay with the way they're described, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't understand it.
You don't understand the buffers?
Oh, I don't understand. What, what you're driving at?
So the, the intent with the buffers is to, within the, within the zones that we've agreed to, buffers further restrict where.
Where, where it's currently stated in the matrix, no buffers or.
Is there any reason for us to discuss box by box or row or column about buffers or are we all good and staff can sell it back to us?
So, so there's a couple that say no buffers at all.
Right.
There's a couple that say no buffers apply, however, multifamily screening applies and then there's, uh,
Right.
a bunch that say.
Whatever, whatever it says here.
Whatever it says there, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, uh, yeah, go ahead, Shelley, I'm going to go to the.
Okay, perfect.
Got you.
So starting with the first column for the family and youth twenty-four hour for both the small and medium sizes, those will be allowed in all zoning districts except for the industrial and riverfront.
And no buffers apply.
And no buffers, so no changes to any of the buffers on here.
Correct.
Then for the large family and youth twenty-four hour, that, those will be allowed in five zoning districts, the DR, the CV, the MIL, the NCB and the UE.
That is what we had as well.
Plus the industrial, you're talking about family and youth twenty-four?
And we did not add industrial to them because industrial and family is.
Oh, just this one, I thought it was both, okay.
I'm sorry, Shelley, I, I hate to ask, but can you, can you just repeat what the five are?
Yes. DR, which is downtown residential, CB, which is Centreville, M, which is MIL, NCB, um, which is neighborhood conservation, B, and UE, which is urban enterprise. Yep, um, so then when we get to the next three columns, all nine of those will allow those five districts just stated, DR, CV, M, UE and NCB. The only exception is for the adult twenty-four hour large, we're going to add the industrial as well. So there will be six districts there.
That does reflect what our discussion has, yeah.
Perfect, okay.
Great.
Um, and then just to clarify, when we talk about buffers, last time we had talked about buffers being five hundred feet from, um, schools, daycares and parks. And so the five hundred feet is that, I don't know if you want to talk about that increment next, if that's still a good increment, if you guys.
Let's tackle it so we can put buffers to bed altogether. Is there anyone who would like to see a number different than five hundred feet for the buffers as referenced throughout where buffers are referenced in the matrix? Mike?
Uh, I saw something tonight, uh, the city council, and I guess they're voting on it tomorrow night. We're in the licensing, they're proposing two hundred and fifty in all instances, right?
Of, for schools and daycares that do not serve, sorry, for shelters that do not serve homeless families or homeless children, then they must be two hundred and fifty feet from a school or a daycare. That's the, the way the line is.
Can you reflect my absent last time memory, uh, why there's a divergence between what we're considering and what city council is considering?
So at, at the time, I think we weren't sure what they were adding for language or doing away with for language. So we weren't sure if the two hundred and fifty was going away entirely.
Is that provided to us, the language they are considering in any of the documents you've given us?
Yes.
The yellow highlighted one.
Yep, the business licensing, page eight, which is highlighted in yellow.
Okay, so can we use that as our baseline then? Is there anyone who's uncomfortable with using the two hundred and fifty?
That was the understanding from the last meeting we had was the, the, the board wanted to.
I was just starting where Shelley started us off with five hundred, and so that's why I was curious.
Yes, and that's two fifty from the property line for all of these.
Is it the property line or is it the front door or?
Nope, the distance between facilities shall be measured between the nearest building entrance of one facility to the nearest building entrance of the other facility.
Okay.
In the definition.
Yep, that's fine.
How, how does that apply to parks if there is no building?
Great question, staff?
I mean, we could use the, um, entrance of the shelter to the property line of the park.
Yeah, because that is the entrance of the park.
Right.
Or, or unless you wanted to do the entrance, I mean, I guess some parks have clear entrances and others you just walk into it.
I think the property line of the park is, is the better way of doing it because, you know, I mean, you look at Kennedy Park, how many entrances are there at every corner and, and, yeah.
Is there, is there an issue with doing two fifty from the entrance of the homeless shelter to the property line of any of these? Because I think about schools.
Can you ask that question again, maybe in a different way for me?
Sure. Right now, it sounds like the direction we want to go is two hundred and fifty feet from the entrance of a shelter to either the entrance of a school, the entrance of a daycare or the property line of a park.
Right.
When I think about schools and to some degree daycare, like schools especially, the campuses tend to be more permeable. They're like a park. I'm wondering if. I wonder if we want to at least treat.
My kids are young, back entrance counts.
A, a, a school in the same way we treat a park. And I wonder if this, just to make it easy, treating a daycare facility in, in the same way to just be consistent across the board if there is a problem with that. I don't see a problem, I think it leads to a better outcome.
Is this language that's being highlighted that which city council is reviewing tomorrow as written?
They are, um, that doesn't mean that they couldn't make changes to it tomorrow night.
Knowing that we have a very patient counselor who's in our audience still tonight, thank you. I for one would love to see this be two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet, it's kind of short. I would love to see it be two hundred and fifty feet from property line to property line at the closest point every time. And I think that gets you, when I think of, I have high school students, so when I think about Franklin pasture and where that meets up with Longley, where that does or doesn't meet up with Connors and how that relates to the pathway that the students take that come out by man's sausage, right? Like I'm thinking about that and I do think property line to property line is the most explicit way. And I don't know if that's something you could amend or recommend amending tomorrow, but we have this problem with the cannabis ordinance too and how's that been to enforce? Can't just pull that up on the map and from line to line like you can when it's properties and not just doors.
So if, if I may, if you do go that direction, I would recommend that we just had to change in our ordinance to the marijuana measurement. Specifically with daycare centers that are cropping up in strip malls, that their property line may go a lot further down than their individual rented space. So I believe the language we used was the nearest wall or fence to a playground to the marijuana establishment for, for those that are in strip malls like that.
I'd love to see that just be consistent.
Yeah, can we, yeah, let's try to be consistent in that kind of language perhaps. Mr. Chittam, if you would make that recommendation tomorrow, well, or mention.
If he agrees with it.
That we are. Maybe you don't agree with it.
This board can make that recommendation for council to consider and you can add color commentary having witnessed it.
Right, right, you can, you can say what we, you know, discussed, you can, since you.
Staff will do our best to send an email that encapsulates what you're asking.
All right.
So just to clarify, you, you want to go property line to property line?
I would want it to be applied the same way that it does in the marijuana.
Yeah, whatever language you, you're using for marijuana, let's be consistent on all of these.
Wall of shelter to the closest property line.
Right, you know, whatever, whatever you're saying, however you're writing it, okay? Just because it, it, let, the more consistency we can have in language, the better, uh, I think it is for.
Before we make that recommendation, maybe we want to hear from these guys.
So I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So is a marijuana, um, ordinance basically say from the nearest wall? Like let's say I'm in the Lewiston Mall, I have a childcare center. It goes from nearest wall to nearest wall if I want to open up a cannabis shop.
So, so I'll give you the, I'll give you the exact example. So if you, if you think of the Rogue Building over on, what is that, Westminster?
Yeah.
So there's a daycare all the way at the end of it. However, the property for that Rogue Building goes all the way down past Chickity.
Right.
And if there is a marijuana grow across the street, across Lisbon Street
Right.
that wants to operate, according to the old ordinance, they couldn't because the property line went to by Chickity. Whereas the daycare is actually outside the thousand foot mark because they're all the way down at the end of the Rogue Building.
To me, that would make, to me, in keeping that limitation would make more sense.
Absolutely, I, I, I agree, I just wanted to make sure that the board wants to go in that direction.
For, for me, it should be from property line to property line in those rare instances where it's like, oh, well, you're actually a thousand feet from the end of the property line, now cannabis shop can't open or, or a homeless shelter can't open across the street. Tough nuggets for the, for the homeless shelter, the cannabis shop, find another place.
Would you mind if I read the exact language we changed that to?
Yeah.
The marijuana ordinance, okay. So, um, in the chart, that's the method of measurement, um, it states the, um, the buffer from the property line of the school childcare facility to any portion of the marijuana business. And then there's a footnote that says, if the marijuana business is located within a commercial subdivision or multi-tenant structure such as a business, park, shopping closet, et cetera, requires setbacks shall be measured in the same manner. Sorry, that was the wrong footnote.
Yes, because that doesn't make any sense.
Oh, did we not print the new? I'm sorry, I might not have printed the new language.
Are you sure the language was like the, in the case that it's in a commercial sub, da, 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 it shall be measured from the wall of one, you know, business to the wall of the other business?
We'll, we'll find it, sorry, I thought I had printed the new.
Can it be related to, so like the, I'm generally for being more restrictive to, right? Like the buffers be going further with whatever language we use. With that said, I think the clarity to be able to enforce it or to know what, what an applicant is proposing relative to their location is important in clarity. And I, in each of these constants, uh, instances, we're talking about there's existing restricted areas, schools, playgrounds, daycares, parks, and then the use that's being requested, in this case shelters of varying sizes or operation. And that shelter would also get a license and that license would be specific to the location it was operating in it. So let, let's say, let's say it's the Auburn Mall because it's fun to not talk about our particular geography and not worry about the implications of it. So we've got somebody who's trying to take the new TD Bank space at the end of the Auburn Mall and then somebody who's trying to do a daycare clear over by Shaw's in that strip mall, right? The parcel is the whole mall parking lot right up to and the licensed business, let's say it was cannabis, that goes into that prescribed anchor store in the mall would be licensed for that space. Is there a way to say the use of which we're reviewing the, the conditional use? The occupancy floorprint of that to the absolute nearest property line? So that it's the use that is restricted and the line that we're drawing is the closest line to the, there's no wall in a park. So that we're tying it back to use again. And that it's not, I'm in a huge strip mall that owns a half mile parcel and that negates a whole bunch of stuff. But the fact that I'm, my license for this shelter or cannabis property, my license is for lease unit six in the big parcel and that that's the starting point. Whichever wall of that is closest to wherever you're drawing the line to and the line gets drawn to the property line of the school childcare. and the line gets drawn to the property line of the school childcare park.
But that's licensing, not land use?
Yep.
Yeah, but we can use the same, the same language.
If it's, if it is conditionally allowed in that zone, then it doesn't matter which end of the strip mall you're on. If you're trying to figure out two hundred and fifty feet from point A to point B, the point A originating in the place that is licensed for use, our business license and not just the health license or the state housing license, but that that's the point A, and the point B is the nearest property line.
The edge of the place that is licensed for use, the nearest wall to the property line.
And is that what you don't have printed, does it sound close to that?
I think you've got it reversed. You're looking at it from the standpoint of the shelter being the strip mall, right?
Yeah.
We're talking about the reverse of that. So, if the childcare facility is in a strip mall, and it's already existing, and then a shelter wants to set up shop in a, in a.
Separate building.
Separate building somewhere.
And in that scenario.
In that scenario, you measure from the property line of that, of that shelter, but what do you measure it to?
Yes, that's what I'm proposing. Because in that scenario, the childcare in the strip mall gets drawn to the property line, giving that childcare extra buffer.
So, you want it to be the opposite of what we just changed the marijuana?
Well, not really, not in terms of consistency.
Because we, because the new marijuana measurement standards allowed the marijuana industry to operate it. It was less restrictive for them. And you're saying you want it to be, you want it to be measured from the property line, even if that property line is a thousand feet from where the actual rented space is of that childcare facility.
Yeah, let me put it to you another way. If there's no parking in front of unit six where my kid's childcare is, and I have to park at the other end of the lot, and my kids are walking in or running ahead by themselves, yep, it's the whole parcel, to your point. Wicked sorry about the lack of consistency though, because no, generally speaking, that's not what I'm aiming for, but yep.
Yes, Alex.
Can we just do property line to property line, and then maybe readdress this in the future if it becomes a problem? I think, I think the cannabis example is actually a really good one in the fact that we put an ordinance in and then found that it didn't work, and we made a change.
Yeah.
And so, I would say for simplicity's sake, for just getting, because this is a very complex issue. Let's just do property line to property line for now.
Yep.
And I think that could change in the future. And I think it provides the restriction that everyone's looking for. It's more, it's more conservative in terms of how it's applying, and let's see if that causes a problem.
Okay, Michael.
If I understand right, this would be more restrictive?
Yes.
And just for clarification with the yellow highlighted section, so the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer was pre-existing number in the licensing. It continues to be the same number. However, there was different language that was added, which is underscored with a couple of words that were struck through. So, the buffer distance didn't change, but how it was measured did.
Right.
And I think it was mentioned that where it says nearest building entrance, there's discussion to change it to property line. And one concern was that it didn't include parks, it just said facility. And I'm just wondering about, so, would this language have prohibited the former Sun Journal from being a proposed shelter where it was proposed a while ago until the deal fell through? But if with this language, it would not have been available? Because it's definitely a lot closer than two hundred and fifty feet to any edge of the park.
This.
This didn't address parks, this is just childcare and schools.
Yeah, this doesn't include parks, this is just childcare and schools.
To be clear though, what we're looking at with the yellow underline is licensing.
Right, so.
We are talking about.
Our own language.
Our own language that is not this. We are asking council to make this language match the language that we're trying to craft tonight. The language we're trying to craft tonight is, it sounds like everyone's pretty much in agreement, two hundred and fifty feet, property line to property line for parks, schools, daycare facilities.
But that was where it's going. It says here proximity to school and daycares, homeless shelters, which do not serve homeless families or homeless children, shall be located, shall not be located within two hundred and fifty feet.
But it goes from entrance to entrance, we're saying property line to property line.
We, and this is council's language, and we're asking them to be consistent with us.
In answer to your question, yes, the, I'm sorry, no. In that instance, the Sun Journal, if this was enacted and council approved it, you know, your recommendation, then no, that Sun Journal building would not have met the requirements because it would have been within the buffer.
Right.
If, if parks was added, because right now, the word parks isn't in here.
No, but if we wanted to put it.
I think we have the opportunity to say two hundred, the premise that we just agreed on, that how we measure it and the distance can also be applied in these to parks as well.
Right.
Would we need to change that definition, or is the way it's in the matrix enough, and that we're just still applying the same method of measurement and distance as well to parks?
In the matrix, it doesn't say parks.
Not just in the matrix, but like, this is, this conversation is serving two purposes. One is number seven that's highlighted in yellow, which doesn't talk about parks, and we just agreed upon, God bless America, to the matrix, and all of the buffers which include parks in there. Is there another place in which parks are included? Is that just going to get addressed in space and use, and we don't care that parks is not part of this definition?
Good question. So, staff will definitely be putting together something, probably in article eleven, that specifies the buffer requirements and includes parks as part of that.
Okay.
For consistency, it sounds like staff might be being asked, and this is a question for you, to send an email to council asking them to consider changes to the business licensing to that item number seven, to have it be, the distance be from property line to property line instead of measured from nearest building entrance. And also to add parks to the list, not just schools and daycare.
I do, I do hear consensus around that.
To homogenize business licensing and land use.
Which I would say is in service of the let's be more business-friendly conversation that we've been having for eons.
Right.
Consistency in regulation and definitions would be nice. Can everybody thumb up support? Yes, that's our recommendation, and that's the buffer distance in meetings that we're talking about for schools, daycares, and parks.
Yep.
Before we move away from definitions, I have one quick question in service of alignment. Children is a very different definition than youth, as you've described it here, and that definition has homeless children, which leaves open some divergence between twenty-one and under being how we're defining youth, and how youth show up, and how this proximity to schools and daycares says, no, maybe anyone eighteen to twenty-one is not allowed in a shelter in, that doesn't qualify for this because nineteen-year-old's not a child. And so, I'm just looking, in the interest of being consistent about language.
The definition provided is homeless children, homeless child or youth is the definition in this licensing document. I think what I would say is like, consistency in language for whoever's writing the licensing documentation, or put something in the definition that says, you know, for the purpose of this document, child or youth are interchangeable.
That's all.
Is that what you're looking for?
That's all, I'm.
Great.
I could just see that being implemented later and it being a big issue for three years' worth of people.
So, we're still looking at item number seven, and you're saying where it says families are homeless children, have it say homeless children or youth shall.
Yep.
Both words?
To match the definition.
And we could agree to youth as we've further defined it somewhere else.
The state definition is using the word children in quotation marks.
Yep.
As opposed to.
As long as the definitions all line up with the text in part seven, we're good.
Okay, sounds, sounds like we've reached a consensus, okay.
Well, they've actually interchanged. Under one section, it just strictly uses the word children, and in another section of definitions, it says homeless youth.
Yeah, but that's where they pulled those from different, different organizations last time, and that's why they're, they don't, they are not consistent.
And they both appear to be the same age bracket, so they're interchangeable.
Right.
In state definition.
So, we want to be as consistent as possible with licensing and planning documents as much as possible if city council, you know, can work with us. Because we really, I think it's best if we're consistent. Okay, Shannon.
I think we've hit three, you're four, and I'm checking in. You have a clear map that relates to the matrix that you're walking away clear with. We're on the same page around types and the population and or size that it's serving, how that relates to the map, and all of the different ways that we've been talking about it, and we just agreed to buffers. Congratulations us, I'd like to call out a little bit of success. That brings us to conditional use. I, that feels like the area in which I have the least familiarity of prior content. And I don't know if that's because it was all new last time. Do you want to help us acclimate to the right document to be ready for that part of the conversation?
Yeah, sure, so, conditional use permits are regulated under article ten. So, that's in your packet. Page four has additional standards for homeless shelters that staff is suggesting.
Can you maybe just show us what it looks like?
This is the one. Come under, guys.
So, in your packet, yeah, if you want to flip to article ten.
Flip to this. Green highlighted.
Green's helpful, guys. Yep.
So, let's see, so, in that, in that article, section three is the standards for conditional use permits. Staff isn't suggesting changes to that section, but that's provided for your reference, so you can see what standards you would normally be applying if we were to make no changes to this. And then, as is consistent with shoreline zoning, for example, we have additional standards for the shoreline area. We're proposing a new section, additional standards for homeless shelters.
Okay. We're getting there. Want to share mine? Okay. I've got two, it's like stereo.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
So, two workshops ago, we did discuss this quite a bit. So, we're proposing that there be this additional language that would give the board additional criteria you would be reviewing an application against, and would also provide additional requirements for an operator for, you know, designing their project. So, we've highlighted five possible categories. Outdoor spaces, so requiring that there be adequate outdoor space to accommodate the capacity of the shelter. And the board had talked about using the same standard as multifamily developments, which at this point in time is fifty square feet per dwelling unit. So, we would need to equate this to occupancy somehow. Staff hasn't suggested how to do that, but wanted to kind of just lift that up, that that was the discussion we'd had so far. The second item is to do with views. So, the discussion was that for large shelters, there would be visual buffer requirements, and that we were directed to use the design standard for buffers for a commercial use being placed next to an existing residential use, which you're familiar with the different buffers in the design standards. Three is access. So, looking at providing access for a large shelter, again, specifically that addresses the needs of the user group that it's been designed for. So, looking more closely at pedestrian bicycle mobility devices as well as places for dropping off and so forth for taxis and other transportation services. Four discusses having a little extra requirements around trash as far as providing screening for exterior dumpsters, which is recommended across the city in our design standards, but not required. So, in this case, it would be required where they're viewable from pedestrian paths, building entrances, and abutting properties, and also asking for a waste management plan that talks about how the property will be kept clear of trash and debris. Staff is a little concerned about how the public right of way would be kept clean in adjacent properties, essentially ensuring that nothing is blowing off of sight. So, that would be one, one area to consider. And then, the fifth one is looking at hours. And a lot of the discussion has been around twenty-four hours versus not twenty-four hours. I think you may have already covered that to some degree, but requiring an applicant to discuss how the hours of operation they're proposing are compatible with the neighborhood, and how they're going to address nuisances seems like a valuable thing to exercise for them to go through, for you.
Alex.
And I think last time when we were discussing conditional uses, we were talking about like, the numeric conditional uses, or like, the yes, no, you know, we're going to approve, not approve if it doesn't, does or does not have it, as well as sort of conditional uses where it's more like, we just want to hear what you're doing. So, like, hours is a good example of, we just want to hear what you're doing. Trash is an example of, we need a plan, we need a thing. Just wanted to provide that context.
Well, there is a determination about whether or not the hours are compatible or not, right?
Yeah, no, no, of course, but.
It's not just hearing what they're doing.
Yeah, but like, I guess, you know, adequate dumpster screening versus tell us about your hours.
There's not like a right or wrong answer versus if there's no dumpster screening, that's the wrong answer. I guess is what Alex is getting at.
Well, so that feels really important to name out loud with this sentence, which I'm going to read out loud because I think it's really useful because it's the one that's going to make us apply it or not in so many conversations in the future. A conditional use permit shall be granted by the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board unless the board finds that the granting of the permit would violate one or more of the following standards. And so, like, that's the language that sometimes makes this board feel a little hedged in, and which I'm hoping is what we're naming in this conversation. I have like a bit of a process question, which is, let's say, one, two, and three, and maybe to some extent, four, are the ones in which we are not just clear, we'll want to hear about your plan for, but it must include X, Y, Z, it must address blah, blah, blah. How, how does that apply? What is the best way for us to both have this conversation and then for you to put out an application someday? As that relates to the five different districts, of which we've kind of named some universality around, versus size? So, like, for most of these, just as a point of conversation to get us started, for example, trash, like, the city could pick up your two cans by the side of the road in a small one, meh, right? If you're serving sixteen people or more, we would like a dumpster and a management plan. And so, it feels like a lot of these, even in your memo, would get applied by size. What is the most useful way to, for us to give you feedback and then for you to actually apply that to future applications that we would be then reviewing relative to this criteria?
Yeah, so I think we had started doing this, and trash is a good example you're raising. So, for two, I had noted just for large shelters, but maybe you want to expand that. And same thing for access was just for a large shelter. But for trash, we didn't specify, so maybe it is for medium and large. And so, you could certainly, for each of these five topic areas, specify if it doesn't apply to certain shelters. You know, we could, we could list that. The, what normally happens, and most of you have been through conditional use permits, but I'll just reiterate this in case anyone hasn't. Just like any other development review, we require the applicant to prepare a narrative that touches on each of the review criteria and to explain how they're meeting that standard. In some cases, they have to provide additional documentation, like in this case, perhaps a trash management plan. So, it might be a longer description, or it might involve a map or diagram or something, or a policy. So, that will be kind of the, what we're applying, reviewing, we'll review what they've submitted against this criteria, and then you in turn will do the same. Now, often, you don't go through that level of detail. It's only when staff highlights that we feel like something might not quite be hitting the mark. But you always can. And so, for a shelter, you may not look at as closely at the general review criteria. You may look more closely at this, I think it'll be case by case. may look more closely at this, I think it'll be case by case.
So it feels like size is really the way for us to add either a requirement, or tell us what you think because you're small, and if you're medium or large, you must also X, Y, Z. Like, size seems to be the biggest disclaimer for us to form recommendations.
For a lot of these, I think so, yeah, yeah, I think so, but you could certainly, you know, there could be other, other, I think whatever makes sense to you as a board, and we're, staff will kind of rewrite this and bring it back to, you know, for the next meeting, so we're looking, if you want to get specific about language, that's great, but if you want to be a little bit more general, that's also okay.
Can I got check with the board related to this?
Sure.
I don't, I'm proposing that there is no other discussion relative to hours. In my mind, if you shut down for an hour or 18 hours a day, none of that has a bearing on this criteria, because in my mind, the votes that we just took about where a non-24-hour program would live and be allowed, addresses all of the criteria, and so I'm checking with you guys if we can just have this discussion about size, because we're confident with the map that we set out and how that relates to hours.
Yep.
Because in my mind, if you're shut down for an hour a day, all, you, the program you're running has a very different impact than one where people are not required to leave, and all at once.
Mm-hmm.
And so fundamentally, and it feels like we asked and answered that, but I'm just checking, can we not have that conversation again?
Yeah, I think so.
I...
Yeah, go ahead, Alex.
I was thinking about hours, both in terms of like, you're open or you're closed, and then also in terms of, you know, we, we talk about like, a waste management plan, like, do we want to talk about an operations plan when it comes down to hours? Because a 24-hour shelter that, because they exist, that doesn't admit people after 10, you know, doesn't allow folks to leave...
That's not a 24-hour shelter. 24-hour shelter, they're there all the time.
No, that's what I'm saying, so, so I've heard from folks who have been through shelters, that some shelters, it's like, you have, you know, it's a 24-hour place, you're permitted to, you know, come and go as you wish until 10:00 PM, and then you got to be inside and the doors are locked, right? And I think the intention around hours and disruption to the neighborhood is like, if you have a shelter that it's like, okay, it's 7:00 PM, doors are locked, everyone's in, that's a little different than come in, come and go as you please 24/7. So, just wanted to throw that out there. Um, and I think too, you know, the, you know, what, what time of day do you plan on having people leave if you're not a 24-hour shelter, maybe has some bearing on placement. I could imagine that being the case.
But we've already discussed where they're going to be, whether they're 24 or they're non-24.
But...
Whether you kick people out at 8:00 AM, 5:00 AM, 5:00 PM, or midnight, doesn't make a difference. In my, and, and I have voted as such already, which is...
Yes.
Your first point notwithstanding, your second point.
Yeah, and I think, uh, the way I see this is because everything is conditional, you know, th- those, those are the places where we would consider any of these things happening, but we still want to have conditional use permitting as a process around this, because...
Yeah, sorry, I think I know where we went wrong. It's not that I'm not happy to hear about hours, nor that the application should name it as criteria, and that we should hear, hear about their planned operational hours, whether it's, we shut the doors at 10, even though we're 24 hours, it is that I don't see a version of us considering any of the other criteria based against ours.
So like, you're not going to weigh the two against each other, or...
This chart's not going to matter for trash, for outdoor spaces, or for views, or access in my mind.
Okay.
So like, so it's not that we can't ask about hours, but whether it is in the way that we have already put them into categories of 24 and non-24, that's not going to have a bearing on my thinking relative to the rest of the criteria, which is not to say I don't want to hear about their planned operational hours, but we've been thinking about some of these others in categories of type of program as well as size, and I'm saying, the hours of the program aren't going to matter to me for the rest of the criteria we're about to set.
Right, right, I mean...
Can I jump in?
Sure.
So, to go kind of back to what the, the conditional use permit, what it says at the beginning, that it would be granted unless you find the permit would violate one or more of the following standards. The whole point of having this is, the reason you make something a conditional use as opposed to just allowed by right, is the ability to turn something down because it's inappropriate, because of the specific parcel and the specific neighbor or neighborhood where it's being located, or a specific operational element of it, and then they have the choice of adjusting that operational element to, you know, comply. So, i- in my mind, hours of operation and some of what staff has listed here about how will they get services if it's not a 24-hour, and where will they be congregating? Are there those appropriate spaces on site on property where they can be during the hours when they're not in the building, or are they out in the street, are they over in the park, where are they? I feel like that is relevant, and that would be a reasonable reason for the board to deny a permit for a location.
Mm-hmm, agree.
Okay. I, I wasn't sure that that was...
It's just that I, uh, go ahead.
It sounds to me like you're saying that you just don't want a conditional use criteria for hours. Is that correct?
Nope, I'm for it. I'd like for them to tell us what their condition, I think I said that part three times already. I would like for hours to be included as a criteria and for us to consider it. The way that we've been talking about hours and how it restricts use does not feel like it is restrictive in this scenario. The criteria is, tell us about your plans and allow us to consider it in light of the placement that you're putting, and not, you must be 24 hours, or you must be open 18 hours, or no one will ever be considered if they're less than. It's not restrictive criteria, in part because we've already named the restrictions we're putting around hours. I am for, again, really for it being included as a criteria, I want the description, I don't see us restricting it beyond that which we've already restricted it for zones.
You, you could though.
Yeah.
It might come before the board or a situation you realize, even though we thought in the...
Sorry, yeah, and that that's why it would be a criteria and would be able to restrict it in that individual, I can't picture us, where I can look at you right now and say, yeah, I want a trash plan and a dumpster for any large facility regardless of how often they're open.
Right.
And you should tell us your trash management plan, which is nice, but if you don't give that, we will as a board say no, because that is a restrictive criteria and not a give us guidance criteria.
Hmm.
And the places that we've added some restrictions from the get-go, do not give us a conditional use permit, because we won't consider it if you haven't given us X, Y, Z. The restrictions around hours, we've already addressed, is what I'm saying. So yes, included as criteria, yes, we could reject it the day of, but there, I'm not, I'm just from a place of consensus saying, I think we've named all the places where hours would be restrictive already.
I'm not following.
Yeah, I'm hearing that from everybody's face. Cool, cool.
You're overcomplicating it.
Yeah, I think so.
Just make it simple, make it simple, leave it the way it is.
Just, just, just tell us...
Great, I love it the way it is, which is...
Just tell us what the hours are, and, and what your plan is if you're not open 24 hours, and, you know, where the heck are these people supposed to go?
I think I would like to hear, regardless if it is 24-hour or partial, a, like, some sort of like transportation or mobility plan, like, we expect people to be able to use the bus, because the bus is, you know, X feet away, or...
Well, it says how guests are get services, or how they congregate, so this is, this is what you're saying, you, you want to know what their plan is for transportation, or, or getting people to and from, and, and that, yeah, I think it's just a gen, a lot of general stuff, not, uh...
If they, and I would, I think to Shanna's point of like, we want something that's like, if you do not include this, we're done.
Right.
I, in my mind, like, how you're going to get people off the site is important.
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's...
And that's, that's a, that's a, you got to provide it, and if you haven't thought of it, we're not talking to you.
And it's the same thing with the trash, I mean, if they don't provide a plan to keep the...
So I guess what I'm saying is I'm, I think I'm trying to give Shanna a, here's the thing, this is what you were just talking about here, or am I...
I am so in agreement.
Okay, all right, so everybody's in agreement.
So in agreement.
Okay.
Big hearts.
Okay.
Big hearts, thumbs up, put it to a vote, because I'm...
Michael wants to make a comment, so first, before we thumbs up, Michael.
We have another two hours of comments.
Please not.
But, additional standards for homeless shelters is what we've been talking about, but it's attached to the entire Article 10, so the entire Article 10 will apply, right?
Yes.
So when we look at it in section three, and it talks about significant adverse impact, that can also be a consideration.
Absolutely.
As well as vehicular and pedestrian access to and from.
Yes.
We wouldn't want like 16 cars on that parcel in the DR district, zone. And when I heard about hours, I'm thinking, okay, so if the proposal is, we're going to allow them to filter back in to the facility up to 1:00 AM, that may not be very good in certain zones, like the DR, where other people live in tenements, but it may not be a problem in the CV, so being something that's in the code for conditional uses, I, I think the hours do have a purpose for being there.
Absolutely, okay. So, shall we let the, the staff work on these and bring it back to us? Thumbs up or thumbs down? A criteria?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. And what I heard was number three, access, that we might want to see a transportation or mobility plan added to that.
Yes.
And then one last question from staff, if you look below it at section four, which is the standards for shoreline areas, now granted, that language was taken from state requirements, but you can see the formatting there is a little different, where, you know, you're only granting the application if you find, if you find that the proposed use will not do X, Y, Z. We could restructure how we're talking about these things, you know, for example, that the hours of, well, that the hours of operation will be compatible with the neighboring uses, like, I don't know if, if the way we've phrased this is problematic, or if you like it, because there is some flexibility in how we've phrased it, as opposed to it being more of a will, shall. I don't know.
And just one more note, so the new green section four, need some renumbering here, because you just reminded me that additional standards for shoreline areas is section four, so.
Oh, yes, yep.
That'll become five and so forth.
That would become five, once we actually do a, yep.
Okay. Okay, you guys got enough? So are we doing another workshop, or are we doing an, a public hearing?
Public hearing.
Um, ninth, is it going to be a public hearing on the ninth?
Well, I guess I would, I would take it back to the board. What does the board feel? How do you guys feel? Do you feel like you have exhausted everything and, and can give it into staff's hands to come back with something for a public hearing and, and be ready to go? Or do you feel that there needs to be some more items fleshed out?
I think we've pretty much beat this thing to death, and I think we should go for a public hearing, and, and, do I have any, anybody disagree? You know, let's, let's do it, and, and, you know, send us the stuff beforehand.
So, staff will do our best to get the, the packets out to you as early as we can?
Okay.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
So that way you can have time to review them?
Yep.
And Deputy Director Norton is looking at the calendar right now, just want to make sure.
So December 9th is the, is the next meeting that you're, you get on our, on our agenda?
We'll do our best, I mean, we'll have the holiday and that, so we're really looking at two and a half weeks, but we'll, we'll see what we can...
And the plan right now is to have the shoreline public hearing?
Yep, the no-name pile overlay.
On the ninth as well? Okay.
Yep.
All right, one, I have a comment, I've been looking at the term, people who are termed out, so I just want everybody who's termed out to figure out if you can be renamed. So Shanna's term expires in January, so does Mark, and so does Mike, so you may or may not, I, I think all of you are available, are eligible for another term, I'm not sure, but that would be, you know, to apply come December so that you can be renamed, because the last meeting would be the 7th of January.
I spoke with the clerk, and, and she's looking to start reaching out in December.
Okay, well, I've just, I noticed that this week when I was looking at this, and so I just thought I'd been, bring it up to the three people who are, yes, Shanna?
I don't think that we have a standard or a policy, and I think our practice has changed from time to time. So just to be clear, those of us who have term limits that are approaching, we should wait to hear from the clerk's office so that we can reapply, and not wait for a link to be shared and to know that it's our time to do it, just checking.
I would contact the city clerk's office if it was me.
There will be, yeah, there'll be a, there's an application that will go up on the website if it's not already there for applying.
I think it's on, on all the time.
And so I would just fill it out and send it in and apply for the board.
Yeah, I would be proactive, I was just letting you know that the clerk is aware of it, I've asked her the same question, and she said that she will be reaching out to those members.
Right.
But I would be proactive.
Well, that, that's why I suggested it, I would be proactive if I was one of you, and, and, you know, they'll let you know if you, if you are eligible for another term, and I think all of you are.
So, is there...
There's a two, there's, there's two, you can, it's a two, three-year terms.
Is, is the most?
Yes, unless you are filling a unexpired term.
Which is what I want, right?
A vacancy.
I, I believe so.
Yep.
So...
You'd still have to reapply.
You still have to reapply.
Fred Assessor's term is over.
So I could do three, more than three year?
You could do, yes, you could do two consecutive.
It's about consecutive, and, and the rules, when I was first on the board, were one full five-year term in your own right.
Right, and then it was five years before you could reapply.
So, if, if you were an associate member, and I took advantage of not taking the full membership for the full term of my associateness, which was not a full term in its own right, I got eight and a third years. I remember Bruce Daman got something like 11 years in his configuration.
Oh, yeah.
Under the new charter regulations, it's two, three-year terms, and it probably also depends on when you were first appointed, because there may be some people that were appointed under the five-year term, which has or has not expired yet, as far as calculating whether you're reappointable.
Right, yeah, so, but, you know, I would suggest that you be proactive, you know, fill out the application, and, and they'll let you know if you qual, if you can or not.
I asked Kathy on election day, so it, it's on the Pliny Woods site somewhere.
Yep, okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Happy jerky day, everyone.
Thank you.
You get the YouTube doors? I can't remember what year it was.
It must have been 2011, it looks like that was the day of those interviews.
Oh, is that what that said? Yep, 2013.
I was part of those conversations. Feels like a lifetime.
One of gender, it's, actually, I was going to say that to someone. I'll give it to...
Shelley, are those prints for me to sign?
No, those are masks.
Okay, that's fine, I just don't want to leave my...